Good evening. Welcome to the Scarborough's running board meeting of July 13, 2016. Shall please see the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hebert?
Here.
Mr. Crockett?
Here.
Mr. Stark?
Here.
Mr. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Blaze?
Here.
Ms. Shoup?
Here.
And Mr. Richard.
All members here, any questions? Do we have a motion for the minutes? All right.
Janine. Motion to approve as presented. Director's question.
Now, if it's unanimous, okay, let's keep writing what we've got. I'm sorry for a little bit of confusion, but just a little bit of time before we came in. I need to get my handle on some information. So, the first appeal is appeal number 2577. Special exception appealed by Goodfane LLC and ATOC Chimney Incorporated, 362 Payne Road, access map R38, Castle IV. Do we have somebody to present us? Is there a state your name, address, and what you'd like to do?
My name's Bill Soule, owner of ATOC Chimney. Address is 219 Cousins Road in Buxton. The address we're dealing with is 362 Payne Road.
Can you be fair and just speak up a little bit for two reasons?
Yeah.
Me and David, probably only me. So, what would you like to accomplish?
Yeah.
Steve Blaze, Blaze Civil Engineers, right down the road here, next to Walgreens. So, basically what we have here is Bill Soule, Bill and Wendy Soule of ATOC Chimney, like to move their businesses, move their operation to Scarborough. They're really excited to move into town. The site is right between A-plus Party Rental and Ron Fence, right on Payne Road, 362 Payne Road. Currently used as a residential, well, not currently used, it's now being turned into a business use, but it was a residential use up until what we're doing now. Back, as far as we could see on Google Earth, it was a farm. There's a barn towards the back, residence towards the front, and the barn hasn't been used for, hasn't been farmed for a while, obviously, by looking at the land. So, we're here for one reason, it's for outdoor storage. Storing any vehicle for over 48 hours in the town of Scarborough requires a special exception, and that's why we're here. We're also going to have some temporary storage of materials. Bill gets shipments of liners to put in chimneys and brick. So, you'll see that on the plan. We tucked it away behind the structure to buffer it from the views of the road, and the parking is to the left as you pull into the site. Site plan, standards require four spaces for this site. Building's just under 1,000 square feet. The site is about an acre. And so, that's what we're looking to do, from residential to a office use.
And the zone, this is in?
This is in the B3 zone.
B3?
Yep. So, the residence that was there was nonconforming. The office, it's actually really more considered retail service in our standards, is allowed use in the B3 zone, and as they stated, it's really the outdoor storage that requires the special exception.
So, this is for trading one special exception for another? Is that a fairly looking at it?
No, no. The residence was nonconforming, so outdoor storage is, so the retail service, the business he's looking to establish, is permitted in the zone. Outdoor storage is, as you know, in our ordinance, we have permitted uses and then special exception uses. So, the outdoor storage is considered a special exception, and that's, those are the standards that the board will be applying, is essentially, you know, does the use sort of, is it compatible in general terms with the neighborhood? And obviously, there's more specific.
So, it's a difference between outside, uncovered outside storage and covered outside storage.
Correct. If he weren't to have any outdoor storage, and we should note that the way our ordinance reads is that outdoor storage is the keeping of commercial vehicles in one place for more than 24 hours. So, as the narrative, I think, describes it here, he has two business trucks, vans, that will go to your house, tip in, chimney sweep come or what have you, that will be parked there over the weekend. So, the keeping of those commercial vehicles is considered accessory outdoor storage, which requires that special exception.
Isn't there a rule, from my back memory, it probably held me, is there a rule that says you can have up to two vehicles?
There is, there is, but it, and I can, it's in our performance standards, and it's limited to our, the R2, R3, and R4. It's really about those residential neighborhoods.
Just not me.
It's not to do with the urban ones. And yeah, that's sort of an antiquated language that actually, as we've been talking in our department, you know, it's probably time to sort of dust that off and sort of see what makes sense maybe to permit some, you know, some businesses to have vehicles that, you know, are used during the week, but stay there during the weekend, but that's a discussion for another day.
Anything you want to add to this?
Not this time. Happy to answer questions as we go, if needed.
So, why don't we do this, let's go through the criteria. And then, a special section. And if you'd like, how do you stand up?
Thanks.
And I'll get to that page in a section. We'll read in the request, and then you can answer accordingly, okay?
Sure.
So, proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhelpful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the aerial waters, or other aspects of its design or operation.
So, we're asking for parking two vehicles. There are, we do require four spaces for, to meet the ordinance of the site plan, that we'll be at Monday's meeting for that. We don't see any unreasonable pollution that would come from, or any waste that would come from the vehicles. And the material storage, bricks and liners are pretty inert, I'll say.
Okay. Is there a shit, is there a building being built in the back?
Negative. There is a building in the back now. It's a, it's a kind of an older barn, and Bill's just really trying to get in, get his business there right now in the front. We might come back at some point and see about the back, but for right now, we're just focusing on making the front structure usable for office. We're not, not changing anything, not really doing anything different, just paint, cleaning, and so, no new structures.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic condition when added to the existing and foreseeable traffic.
Yeah, so Payne Road sees a lot of traffic, as we all know. The neighborhood, across the street, there isn't any development directly across the street. To the, if you're looking at the site to the left or the south, is Ron Fence Company. You know, they certainly see the same kind of use or more. And A-plus Party Rental, I see their box trucks on the road anyways, I imagine. They go in and out of there a bit, so I feel it's a pretty compatible use. I don't think there's any unreasonable safety concerns there. Site distance is also, good site distance on Payne Road.
Proposed use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, or require substantially greater degree of municipal fire, police protection than existing uses.
Similar answer to the one before, very similar to, you know.
The proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have adverse effect on the water supplies. Do you have to build out any road, car coming around?
We just improved the gravel a little bit, is all we're going to do. So, no real, we're not digging anything up, so to speak.
Proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact intensity of use proximity to other structures, and density of development.
At this time, we're not proposing any changes to structures, other than beautification.
And that's on, that's on the show, is it?
It's not the show.
All right. Do you own the property now, or contract? And when did you purchase this recently?
Yes, previously.
Pledge allegiance. You have the technical, financial, if we dump all kinds of stuff on you, can you afford us? It's one of the questions that's on here that says you have the technical and financial ability, who knows what that means? So, I'm just saying, just so you know that it's out there, we, that you saw.
Yeah, Bill's planning to self-perform the work, so.
One of those questions that you read, you totally find that here. Okay. Want to open up the board for questions?
There's the final one.
Did I miss one? Sorry. Thank you. Proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to generation of noise and hours of operation.
We're not proposing any hours beyond what's already existing in the neighborhood.
And the vehicle's going to be parked where those new spots are, or are they going to park them back?
Right, where those new spots are, on the left.
And the gravel is going to be next to the barn, and then there's going to be a dumpster after that, is that right? Is that dumpster?
So, as you're going in, you can park to the left, and you go in a little more, storage on the right, between the existing structures, and then there's a, there's a bit of a access to the barn that was kind of historically there.
So, when I, when I looked at the pictures, I didn't see any storage after the house, I only saw the.
Correct. Yeah, and the, so the storage is being added between the structures. We just thought it'd be a good place to add it, so the structure can hide the views from Payne Road.
My, just general question on that is, proposed gravel storage pad is one conversation, I can measure that out pretty easily, it looks like 10 by 10, and the dumpster pad looks something about 8 by 8. Is that all we're talking about for storage? Are we talking about pipes over here?
No, that's all we're talking about.
So, the rest is just going to be gravel or grass?
I thought they were chimney tiles.
Excuse me?
Materials.
Yeah, tiles and liners, they would.
And where are they going to be stored?
In that little.
Right, right here.
It'll fit in there with the gravel.
So, I think, I think that this, the dumpster pad 10 by 10, we usually draw on that size, so that's a little bit bigger than 10 by 10. And really, it'll be, anything that stays for a long term will be sorted in a little section of block to keep it out of water.
And so, what I'm trying to get a handle on here is, is six months from now, we've got pipes and a couple of old engines, who knows what. What I see here is nothing else but those two areas, and the rest is going to be open and clear.
Correct.
And the reason you can't put the gravel inside the barn is it just because it's not enough, wide enough door to get that up, whatever?
It's more a function, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, of the delivery method, you know, the truck comes and they're looking to get it off, not necessarily in the building. And, you know, maybe Bill's not there when they deliver, and he says leave it in the storage area.
And is that, is that what, we, how many yards is that, 550?
As far as the storage goes, it's not very, not very big at all. It'd fit in the back of the dump truck, what we would have.
So, you're not talking, you're not talking about a dump truck?
No.
Oh, they are sinking dump truck.
Oh, no, no. It's not loose material, it's, the bricks come on pallets, right?
Yeah, and very seldomly is it more than 100 bricks.
This may be the problem, I may be misunderstanding. Proposed gravel storage pad, I took that literally. Does that mean it's a gravel pad that's going to have storage on it?
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry.
That helps. Why are you going to do that?
What are you, what are you using the gravel for?
Okay, thank you for clarification.
He builds roads on the side. No, just kidding.
Other board members' questions, sorry they didn't.
You said proposed beautification, and does that mean you're actually going to fix up that building or make it eye appealing?
The, the building up front or the back?
Up front.
Yeah, it's, it's in the process of doing it right now.
Okay, I'm not real concerned with the one in the back, but the front.
Yeah, the one up front has been, been worked on, as of speak.
And what's being included on that?
As far as fixing it up?
Yes.
We've gone through, and so far, we've gone through the front of, three sides of the building. We've repaired any wood, it's been, it's wooden, battened siding. We've painted three sides of it, so far, we've, you know, painted a deck, placed a few minor boards on the deck, and it's been painted, and painted the doors and stuff like that. It looks quite a bit different.
I'm assuming this picture is not after the painting.
Right.
Have you had a chance to drive by it at all?
I actually did take a chance to drive by today, and yeah, I was surprised at how different the building looks.
Would you compare it to, what is there currently, like with Ron Forest Fence and the party stores?
Yeah, it's, it's dressed up as well as, it's got a fresh coat of paint on it, and it definitely looks.
So, what's the expression, pig thing? Is that, is it about as good?
Yeah.
From practical point of view?
Without doing something substantial to the building, I think he's done a nice job with what's out there.
Okay. Any expectations that you would want beyond that?
Well, that would be a question, so I, when you asked me before, I should have mentioned, this item will wind up going before the planning board for a full site plan review, because it's a conversion of a residential use to a commercial use, that triggers full site plan review. So, I should have mentioned that at the outset, and I apologize for that. So, the planning board will ultimately decide that, but.
And that also, does that also include the safety environment, whether or not this meets the.
Yep, so, so they'll take a look at traffic type issues, you know, more closely. Typically, you know, outdoor storage areas, dumpster pads are looked to be enclosed, so they might ask for some fencing around there, might be a question that could be asked, so they'll sort of look at those details. But yes, to your question, you know, certainly the fire department, as part of the application to the planning board, fire department, public works, SEDCO, sanitary, planning, codes, all departments get a bite at the apple, we sort of all get together, discuss the issues.
But the planning board is not looking to us to make any decision for them to go forward, right?
All, what, what the applicant is before you for is for the outdoor storage. The planning board can't approve outdoor storage, that's, so, once, once, and if you say the outdoor storage is acceptable, and the parameters of how big it can be and the location, then the board will do the rest that they typically do with the site plan.
And the four things we're dealing with is two vehicles, a dump pad, and a gravel area.
And the, the material storage.
That's all we do.
That's it.
Yep.
Where the two, the two parking spaces come from? Why do you need two? Why don't you need three? You expect your business to grow? You know, now's the time to, to think about that.
Well, what I, what I do is I take my vehicle home, and the two vehicles that my employees use are staying overnight. That, that's, that's a point that me and Steve had talked about, and I don't anticipate it happening anytime within the next three years, probably.
But he's getting at, he doesn't want to have to, you have to make, you know, he's trying to be a good guy, he doesn't want you to have to come back.
I see.
So, if you think you could use three, now's the time to ask for three, because if two, two gets declined, three isn't going to make a difference.
I see.
Does it, does it matter to the board if we were, there's four parking spaces required by the site plan approval? It'd be simplest to go four.
Oh, no.
But, but three would be fine, two works. I mean, there's a chance in the future, if his business grows, he might be back in front of the planning board again, and let's, let's make the site even better, so.
Is there, are the temporary vehicle shelters going to remain there?
No.
Okay, those are coming out.
Do you anticipate any walk-in customers?
No.
Okay.
Because we ran into that last month, with the outdoor structures not considered outdoor storage or something like that, I believe.
Right, so if, if.
If they were leaving them, they wouldn't have to do it.
Right. If everything could go in that barn, wouldn't be here, be just going to the planning board. That was a discussion that we had early on, so no one said, well, you know, if you want this stuff, you're going to have to do this two-step process, so sure you can't use that barn, and I think he's looked at it obviously pretty closely.
Well, I'm not even saying the barn, I'm saying, we, we ran into it last month with the pop-up tents, being considered, not being considered outdoor storage, I believe, at an appeal last month, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman.
These are correct.
But if they're removing those, they're kind of defeating their own purpose, because then they have to ask for it. See what I'm saying?
Stay with me, please.
The shelters or the pop-up tents, last month, I thought those weren't considered as outdoors, outdoor storage or something.
Typically, they need, you're right.
So, by removing them, they're actually asking for storage they already have.
That's correct.
Okay.
Where are those located currently?
Right on the driveway, right where we're going to be parking.
That doesn't.
The, the first two parking spaces.
But you, you don't want them there.
I don't, I don't want them.
Okay.
That's a great question.
Because that's just, it's just something that doesn't need to come before us, because it's not considered storage outdoors.
This is why you run the board, that was your, you're right.
The character of the neighborhood, do you want to have that on your front lawn?
Right, I understand.
What about the, what about the, the container out back? I was reading the section, accessory containers, is that staying or leaving? Because that shouldn't be there.
It will definitely eventually leave. As of right now, I haven't even gotten that far, to be honest with you, it's, there's some stuff in there that I'm still going to be, I've taken quite a bit of stuff to the table.
Surprise.
Yeah, so it, it will eventually leave, yes, so.
Do you need to have a timeframe? Six months, three months?
Two years.
A year, by, by this time next, next year, I think, I mean, I got, it's on the list, it's just down on the list.
That'll be planned, we'll, we might want to make a comment on, you know, let's figure out later. Other questions from board members?
The only thing I would think of is the suggestion that was made, that the planning board may, may ask us to do like a fence or something around there. I don't think that's necessarily a bad idea, to have an area where it's.
Yeah, so the planning board would take a look at that, it's one of their, when they go through a site plan review ordinance, one of the elements is outdoor storage, and that standard specifically calls for dumpsters and outdoor storage areas to be fenced, so I'd suggest that's something the planning board would be looking for, or, so I think if this board has an opinion on that, then certainly that would carry weight.
If they, yeah, we can, if we see anything that we'd like to look at, we can't mandate anything other than what we have control over, but if you have something that's important to you, make sure you get it in there.
One thing to, to the chair's point earlier, I think part, part of the fencing does help to be sure that materials stay where they're supposed to, you know, sort of have an open area, things do tend to drift, so you, you close them in, it becomes pretty obvious, especially gravel.
Do you have any problem if we, if we had some, asked for a fence in that area that you're looking for for storage?
No, no, Steve and I actually talked about that, I think it would be.
Yeah, because it does, it does confine that area, so it can't create 10 feet.
Bond is a nice guy. We haven't met Ron yet. He's a really nice guy.
We prefer not to have a swing gate in front, is that, maybe do it on three sides, that would contain it pretty well, because there's a drive aisle. So, that, that's maybe one thing we'd, we'd request, but.
That sounds good.
Any other questions or motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not opening the public. So, I think this time I'll open the public, can I wish to speak to this? The late person that want to speak to this?
I'm fine.
Okay, just checking. Do you have any letters or phone calls on this?
No.
Okay. Close of the public hearing, all right. I just picked on SEDCO's chair, so.
I'm having a voice.
I thought the joke was you're hunting pokey. Okay, so, do we have a motion?
Move to approve, really as, as requested, I think I would prefer that the, the planning board does discuss that, that fence issue.
So, is it?
And the, and the storage container.
And it says a motion. I'll second that.
I'll second.
And I'd like to add to that, four parking spots as opposed to two.
Well, they have four in the plan.
Four, four, so they end up, but they can't store.
So, six, six total parking spaces?
No, no, allow them four vehicles. They'll, in case they don't.
At the times that you're storing the vehicles, there isn't anybody working there anymore, right?
Correct.
So, up to four vehicles to be stored on site, commercial vehicles.
Just trying to get a little bit more than.
Yeah.
So, the goal is to do it right.
Appreciate it.
That's really the goal, is to do it right, and if we, a lot of people come in asking for less, because they think they're not going to get the more, and they'd rather do it right the first, and actually, that was a great idea, Mr. Blaze. I'll throw the second on that.
Was, is your motion to request the three-sided fence to send to the planning board?
That the, that the planning board discuss the fence and the storage container.
Are you okay with me adding that condition to that? Do you have that okay? So, we have a motion and a secondary motion accepted by the original person that made the motion, so it's just a one vote. We need to go through the criteria, we do. So, we just discussed it. My personal opinion is this is pretty clean, we can go through one by one if we want. List of board thinks this is controversial, well, to me, this seems pretty straightforward, doesn't the requirement?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any controversy.
Okay. We'll just, any more discussion on the motion? Now, in favor of the motion? That's unanimous? Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm not seeing any other big votes for it.
Talk of the business. Somebody got some one?
Okay, if we're ready, the next appeal is a 2578 special exception appeal refused by Ryan Newgen at 244 Payne Road, access map R40, Castle IV. Would you like to take the microphone, please? And you may, you're welcome to sit down, understand your choice, and just state your name and address for record, and as with the first person, if you can speak as loud as you can, just because.
I'll try my best.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, my name is Brian Nugent. I'm here for, for 244 Payne Road to have a, a booth or a nail salon.
Okay, and.
No, other than the site is currently owned to an existing home occupation that was approved back in the 80s for a, actually for a auto mechanic repair shop, which is interesting, because that's one of the things that's currently not allowed as a home occupation, but apparently it was back in, back then. And so, he's looking to convert from one home occupation to another home occupation.
Now, that, that's where kind of my question comes up before we go too far, I want to make sure I get a handle on this. In the home occupation section, it says in section B, I meant section nine. And when I look at your layout, I see one, two, three, four, five stations for nails, and I see four stations for pedicures. And, I'm not sure what that is. What's a waiting area? So, this is, in what zone, this is a?
Hygus Parkway.
Interesting. Hygus Parkway. What does Hygus Parkway allow for that?
So Hygus Parkway, um, this is, when, when we originally met with this, it was, Hygus Parkway allows, um, live work units, or, it would actually allow, so the nail care service is considered a personal service, so that would be, that's a permitted use in the Hygus Parkway, would have to go through site plan review. It also allows sort of live work units, that would need to go through our plan development review process, which is sort of a owner's three-step process, that's not a great fit for this lot. Or, the other sort of alternative pathway forward that we talked about was really the conversion of one home occupation to another home occupation. And so when we talked about that, that was one of the questions that we had talked about was, you know, this is truly a home occupation, and that folks who live at the home are gonna be the ones employed, so that was what seemed to be the best fit for the activity.
But in the Hygus Parkway.
Yeah.
A home is a non-conforming use, and they had to have, is this the home that had to have the exception? Isn't there, isn't there a, why do I think there's a?
Not the one that's stuck back here, but one?
No, this, this home is just on the right after you go past Cabela's, I think it's the next, it's on the right-hand side.
First house.
First house after Cabela's.
Yes, first house after Cabela's.
First house, house after Cabela's, basically a ranch.
Yeah, but what I'm, what I'm confused about is, if I remember correctly, the Hygus Parkway zone doesn't allow residential. So if, I guess, this, this is the one that concerned me when I came in, and I'm trying to get a hint, so the board knows what I'm up to. When I saw this, I said, you know, how can you do this, not realizing it's a Hygus zone? And for those of you remember, if you hadn't had a chance to look at it, one of the rules of the Hygus zone is that residential is a non-conforming use. So we had to actually, we do it, we did, I can't remember whether or not we did a contract zone, that house, I wanna say that housing contract zone, or an exception, something weird about it.
Yeah, I looked in the, I remember looking in the file, this was sort of early in discussions and subsequent to that, Brian Longstad has certainly been more involved than I have, but as I said, back in the eighty, early eighties, the site received the special, yes, special exception approval for the home occupation, same sort of effort that you're being asked to go through right now. So really, this is a conversion of that existing home occupation to another home occupation, different style home occupation, so it's.
Keeping the residents a resident.
I guess that's, I think that, that was the initial.
Right, keeping the residents and.
Right, so it's grandfather non-conforming use, correct.
So we're actually making it more conforming by allowing, would you say that that's?
Well, I would say, to an extent, I would say personal services, nail salons are permitted, automobile repair shops are not. However, these are really being considered home occupations, so it's, it's sort of that fine nuance between, what's the difference between a home occupation and a business? But in our ordinance, we sort of call it a business, so again, but yes, in, in sort of simple terms, I would say it is becoming more non-conforming, because at least the home occupation activity is one, allowed in the Hygus Parkway, and secondly, is one type of home occupation that's permitted, whereas a garage is explicitly not allowed as a home occupation, at least in today's ordinances. So, so this approval would make the site become more conforming, and so I think, back to your sort of original question, the, the main question for the applicant to answer at this point, that, that you had asked, is sort of, who are, that doesn't, will it meet that standard in terms of only one outside employee at the most? And that, we don't know the answer to yet.
So that's, I don't know how to address this then.
To me, man.
I know if, if we're supposed to judge this based upon the performance standards of home occupations, if not, we need it.
Except for the fact that a home occupation, I mean, a home is not allowed in the Hygus Parkway.
Well, I'm, I'm talking.
This is weird.
I'm talking just about the home occupation, regardless of really where it is.
Yeah.
It's a home occupation.
Right, if I could, because he's converting from one type of home occupation to another, I believe that, that's what requires this board's action. So you need to find that this new home occupation, so any home occupation that's ever approved is approved for that activity only. Someone else can't come in and change it, that's my understanding.
According to Mr. Blaze, he's right, based on that assumption, you can't have anybody other than the person that lives there and one other person.
And that's what we need to find out.
But, but this is what I'm confused about, and, and I'm assuming that you're planning on having more than one person and making this into a business.
That's right.
And, and that's, the right answer's the truth, so, thank you.
You got six or seven stations.
I, I think it's to our advantage, to be candid with you, when I read this today, and I was really struggling with it, and I actually thought there was no way in order to do it, it didn't even make sense to me why it was coming forward, because I, and I didn't catch the fact it was in the, in the, in the Hygus Parkway zone.
Let me try, let, let me try clear on the nine unit that we're talking about, it's not like a nine people working there. A nail station is one of the persons, gonna be taking care of one of the pedicure. So, this is only gonna be four staff gonna be working, that's include me and my wife, so it's only two outside of, not, not live there, but work there.
What about the receptionist?
I'm sorry?
What about the receptionist?
Yeah, that's gonna be my job, working and receiving.
So I'm hearing that there's gonna be two outside employees, if the ordinance only allows one outside employee. So to that, you would fail to meet that one standard under that.
If that's a standard that would apply in the Hygus Parkway zone, which I don't think it does, and that's what I'm trying to get my arms around, I think Mr. Blaze is doing the same thing. Mr. Stark, too, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, I'm just trying to find something here, so if you don't mind us kind of all looking at some paperwork first, do you wanna read anything, or?
Can we go through the questions?
We can, but I'd like to just have a second to get a handle on what I'm looking at.
If this is allowable, if it's an allowable business, in the Hygus Parkway zone, right?
Yes.
Hey, you could do it, it wasn't a house, you could do it all day long.
It, it is allowable.
It doesn't make any difference, but it's a house, a house is grandfathered.
That's right.
It is an allowable business, if it's a first.
So, we don't have to worry about a home occupation, this is a business.
I agree with you.
And it's allowable in the Hygus Parkway, but not if they're gonna live there.
But that's a non-conforming use, that's a non-conforming use. So in other words, and I'm trying to.
It's not a home occupation.
It, that, that's what, so, so yes, that's what I, so there's, there's a couple, as I said, when we first met and tried to sort of tease out the best way for this to move forward, or the multiple ways this can move forward, we sort of laid out a number of options. So the Hygus Parkway does allow for mixed-use buildings, it does allow for a, a building that has a dwelling and a business in it. In that regard, see, they would need to go through, as I sort of mentioned before, this plan development review process, which is a three-step review process before the planning board. The first step is, is a site inventory and analysis. I'll sort of step back, the plan development process really is designed for much bigger sites, larger sites, sort of undeveloped sites. This is, I think roughly an acre parcel or so, that's obviously already developed. So the first step is, as I was just saying, the site inventory analysis, where the applicant needs to, they do a bunch of analysis in terms of the natural constraints and built environment. Once that's sort of dealt with, the planning board then reviews it for a master plan, which generally lays out the, the, the building layouts, the infrastructure layouts for a site, and then it moves into site plan process. And so while that is, that was one of the pathways that we suggested could be possible, but it seemed like a bit more of an off-fit than converting an existing home occupation to a different home, to a newer home occupation, because that really simply requires review by the Board of Appeals and doesn't require planning board review. When they get into the planning board review, it becomes, you know, if the nail salon goes in, and it truly isn't, you know, if it's not gonna be a home occupation, and it's gonna be a full business, then it will need to go through these steps. But the way it was described is that it was gonna be more of a home occupation. And so, if, if it were to meet the criteria of a home occupation, the way staff saw it was that it could be, this board would review as a conversion of one home occupation to the other by applying those home occupation standards. Now, what we've heard tonight already is that there's gonna be two outside employees, which means it doesn't meet our home occupation standards, so now we need to have that discussion about the other pathways forward, which is really through the planning board review processes, not this board.
But isn't the house portion of it grandfathered already?
So, yeah, certainly he could.
How would it go back to a home occupation if the house is already a special exception?
The house, the house is in a special exception, so the house, the house.
The house is there first.
Right, the house is.
The house is there first.
Right, so the residence can, is a grandfather, can make, can remain. It's the, so if he just wants to go in and didn't want to operate any business there, just wanted to move his family and his, but there, it wouldn't require any review at all.
Unless it hadn't been occupied for a year.
Correct, then, then.
Has it been occupied regularly?
That's our understanding, yes. So then it's, because of the change of.
Mr. Stark, I think he's found something, he wants to go into the record here.
Well, it just, it, it still makes it a little ambiguous here, and, and these are the court requirements, if you, looking under, under the residential uses, number twenty-eight, it says live work units, and only as part of the mixed-use plan development is specified on the subsection two C five. When you go to two C five, it's required, required plan development incorporating boarding care facilities for the elderly and nursing homes, but it also includes others, so I'm gonna read the whole thing, it's boarding care facilities for the elderly.
That, that's, I actually looked at that earlier, that's clearly an administrative error. I think what it means to turn it to is two C four, which is, two C four is requirement of plan developments incorporating live work units, residential dwellings, so, yeah, that's just an administrative hiccup in our ordinance that needs to get cleaned up.
Okay.
So yes, you're right, he could do it under either a live work unit, if he met those standards, or a dwelling unit in a mixed-use building, again, if he met those standards.
Why wouldn't he meet, why wouldn't he meet live work standards? What's, what's the wall there?
So definition of live work, I mean, we could sort of tease our way through it, but again, that sounds like the home occupation.
Usually, usually, you see Brian just complains about this. We can make you work a little bit.
A live work unit is a mixed-use unit within a multifamily dwelling or mixed-use building that contains both living space and workspace. The workspace shall be limited to no more than one thousand square feet of floor area, so that's what we need to understand, so we don't, I haven't teased through those details, because at this point, the request is for a home occupation, which he's not meeting.
But does the garage count as floor area?
Does the garage, you mean the, where the business is?
Yeah.
No, that would be the business area.
So we've got.
Mr. Chairman, could, may I ask a question on behalf of the client?
Absolutely.
Just a question. So if the.
Could you just take your name and.
Sorry, Karen Martin, I'm the Director of the Scarborough Economic Development Corporation. If the hangup or if the, the difficulty is on the number of employees, one question I would have, because you're going from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, if the previous non-conforming use had more than one outside employee, can that be considered part of the standard by which he's measured? So if it, if they had two employees at that place, and he's not having more than two employees, could that work? I just, I don't know.
It's a good question, but technically, that one's been in place for a long time, so they may have done that, but they wouldn't have been authorized to do it, but it's a great question. Thank you. All right, unlike, unlike the other zones, if you go to any of the other zones, it kind of says permitted uses, it's kind of straightforward. The Hygus Parkway one is not as clean, in my opinion, as those so.
What was the live work you were talking about, Mr. Chairman?
The, the live work is, I think actually Mr. Stark pointed it out to me, the live work basically is, Kerry Anderson's project over on, where, where on Route one was going to be that, where basically you'd have a situation where you'd have, the downstairs would be a business, and you live on the second floor. That never came to fruition, but that was the, and that would be, so you'd have like five of these rollouts, where you'd have small businesses, and they could, you know, but honestly, kind of the old-fashioned way that the United States has built, you worked out your house still all the time, and you did, you know, it's kind of really out, it's done. So, and so it's, it's, the other example of that is the, the restaurant that does the, uh, right across from, right across, children.
New name now, I believe.
Is it, but that was the same concept, they had a live work situation there. What's, what's challenging me is what I thought was a roadblock that wasn't able to be a pass is now seeming, to be candid, relatively easy, because we've got an existing use. I agree, if Mr. Blaze said this, I'm not sure, but I think I understood you to say, we're not really talking about the home residents, we're strictly talking about the business, and they have separate entities that may be attached, but they're separate entities, is that how you're seeing it?
And the business is allowable in the district.
That's kind of how I.
Regardless of.
Jump in if you have, you have a face like, I'm not so sure, so jump in.
You're saying the garage is a business and the house is a separate exception?
Well, the house is, is grandfathered.
Right.
And the goal is to convert, the goal is to convert the entire Hygus Parkway, basically, taking the assumption that the goal is to take Hygus Parkway and make it into a business area. That's why they didn't put residents as a option, so the residence is a non-conforming use.
The biggest question I have is, does this board have the capacity to say, "Yeah, you can have two employees"? Or no, is it, it's just one?
Well, if you use, if you use the definition of home occupation, one.
Right. And that's it, there's no, so the board doesn't have the authority to say, "You're in Hygus Parkway, you can have two."
Well, we can make the decision to decide exactly what Mr. Blaze suggested, which is.
Right.
That the Hygus Parkway, that's a, that is in fact a non-conforming use of record, and the goal is to get it more in line with businesses that we want in Hygus Parkway. So, you know, the best thing that could happen is if the business grows to the point where he takes the house and converts it over to an entire thing. So we're getting more in compliance as opposed to less in compliance, although, that's not, it's kind of how it can happen.
Here's the one thing that kind of puts a roadblock on it, it's one of the requirements, these are the four requirements, and this, this top one, given the Hygus Parkway District is principally a business district, the floor area of all residential uses within the planning development shall be a maximum of forty percent of the total floor area of all the building floor area within the planning development.
The way you get out of that, and I don't think you're getting out of it, but I think the, the reasonable fact of that is that considering Hygus has new construction, I don't think they thought about somebody taking an existing construction. I was there when we built the, the Hygus, the paperwork, so I remember it pretty well, and you were in the zoning board at the time, I think. So I remember going through the Hygus Parkway plan, and the goal was, there were like a couple of houses that by innocence, we had to grandfather them, because we banned homes from that development, because that wasn't the goal. And our theory was that the value of the land would exceed the value of the home, and so people would eventually, that would lead away. Now, on the Payne Road section of Hygus, I never even thought about it, but. So I remember going through the Hagis Parkway plan and the goal was, there were like a couple of houses that by innocence, we had to grandfather them because we banned homes from that development because that wasn't the goal. And, uh, our theory was that the value of the land would exceed the value of the home and so people would eventually, that would lead away. Now, on the pain road section of Hagis, I never even thought about it. But if, if we're keeping true to what the Hagis zone is, and we've got a home that is non-conforming use, and a gentleman comes forward to us and says, I want to bring this more into conformity with the zone, but I'm not able to make it one hundred percent in conformity with the home. So I can't meet the forty percent rule, but I can do this and with the goal of drawing my business to the point where, that as any business hopefully does, is it grows. So, when I'm looking at it, I'm, I'm taking a, I don't think we can apply the home office, the home business use to this because it's not allowed in the zone. You can't do a home business, but the home business is there, so it's grandfathered. So all we're doing is making it more compli- we're making it more conforming. If you think of this, say this was on, on Hagis Beach, right? And we decide to move the lot, we say, look, you're going to use the same size footprint, but you're going to move it more to the center and to the front. It doesn't allow us to do that necessarily, except for the fact that we're bringing it more in compliance with the goal of, of that zone. I'm treating this very much like that, and I'm just one guy, so, you know, jump in, but I've been beating my head, all day long, I've beaten my head around this one. And I've been trying to figure out what, what, what do we have here? And to me, what we've got is a home that's grandfathered, so really irrelevant. And we're taking part of that home, which was used as an unrevealed place, but now we're making it more compliant by putting in something that is more consistent with what we'd expect in Hagis Parkway zone. Because the repair stations are not allowed. So we've done two things, we've eliminated something that, so we've actually taken away the view of the, the repair shop, which isn't allowed in the zone. So if you solve half of the problem, you can't solve all of the problems. Can I kind of test the board? Does anybody have a con- problem with the concept of him having a, and, and there's not a wrong answer here, I just need to, I get you to feel the board. Having a, a business like this with this whatever number of employees he needs in Hagis Parkway?
Not in that zone.
I, I do not because it's, because of the uniqueness of the zone that it's in, also adjacent to the other businesses that are nearby.
The only reason I would have an issue with it is because that's what we're considering. And it's clearly written.
What I'm looking for is just the question of whether or not you have a problem with it. I'm taking the rules right away. What I want to do is, I want to, I'm testing the waters of where the board is at. Because if the board is on, in agreement that this is reasonable and we'd like to see him accomplish this with the least pain possible, and we can do that without, um, breaking our own rules. Because I think there's a potential of breaking our own rules by voting for it as a conver- as a conversion of a use. I think we do it two ways. Do it as a conversion of the use and, so take two pieces. Given the fact that it's, it's vague, we take the position of we are allowing it to be converted from one use to another. And then we, that allows us to then go to the part that Mr. Stark mentioned, which allows it to be a work use blo- place. So we've given him the ability to have as many employees as he wants. But we can't do that.
Right, we can't do that, that's what they just said.
Well, I'm not sure we can't do that. I'm, I'm not sure we can't.
Sounds like staff thinks we can't.
We can't do what?
I mean, if we, this is somebody who's just a board, I think if we do it, I think we have the right to do what we want to do. And if the planning board wants to sue this board, they can. But, I mean, but we're, we're quasi-traditional, as long as we're not breaking any regulations.
I, I see no reason why he can't just start his own nail business in Hagis Parkway, it's an allowable use, right? The business is allowable.
I'm assuming the town wants.
And he's starting it in the house. I mean, a house has got a garage, you know, I mean, business, Apple started in the garage.
Yeah, well, that got us. Does the town want this business in this location?
I, I'm simply stating what we believe the law is.
Okay.
So, again, you know.
The town is not having any angst?
No, no, no. As I said, we, we see there are multiple pathways forward for this and that's what we tried to spell out. We thought the home occupation conversion was the simplest, but if the board wants to go in another direction, it's serving your leisure and.
It would have been, had it been just one employee.
Right, had you guys, had you folks known that it was more than one employee, we would have had this before us.
Had he told us it was more than, I mean, more than one outside employee, it wouldn't even be before you.
And it probably wouldn't happen because my guess is the cost of going through site plan.
Process is, is.
Forty thousand.
Yeah.
Job, if they're lucky. And then there'll be fees and, that's a nightmare. I mean, I, it's not a nightmare because of Scarborough. It's the right thing to do in certain situations when you're putting a business in place. And Scarborough does a really good job, I'm really proud of Scarborough. And I actually built a house, a building, and studied it to find problems. So, when I look at Scarborough's ordinance, it's fine. When you're building a thirty thousand foot building, it's not that big of a deal. When you want to have a hairdresser shop and nails or, or pedicure, you've got to do a, you've got to do a traffic analysis, you've got to, it's a nightmare. And I don't think that's reasonable. And so I guess what I'm getting at is, this is a quasi-judicial board, which means anybody that wants to challenge this has to go to the next court level. I don't believe that the planning board has a desire to go to court against us. Maybe they do, but I think they have other things to do. So as long as they're not going to have a problem with our decision, they can do whatever they want after the fact. They've still got control of this process after the fact, it still goes to them, correct?
I guess it's going to depend on how you craft, what, what you're putting together. I'm, I think, so I'm, I'm.
What you're saying.
I've, I've said my piece, so I will.
Brian would tell us what to do.
The one thing, the one thing that I have thought about in this conversation and where it's, where, where we really seem to be heading at this point and, and I think makes a lot of sense in a lot of ways, it might sort of be the pathway that staff would think is, um, fits within the ordinance is really looking at our section three non-conformance and really looking at this as a, um, uh, expansion of a non-conforming use. And under section F, it talks about a non-conforming use of land, building, or structures may be enlarged, extended, expanded, reserved, or converted to another non-conforming use on the lot, which it occupied at the effective date of the amendment.
This is what we wanted you to do a half an hour. That, I think, I think that meets our requirement.
Was that your third option?
That is, that's probably option four or five, you know. It's, but that, that's really what I'm hearing, sort of the conversation gravitating towards, that you're not comfortable with the home occupation conversion, which for reasons that we're now understanding, we can't do anyway, that that's really the process. And so that's a, a separate application that Mr. Nguyen had to put together for you, I believe. Because if I remember correctly, I believe that process under section five requires, I want to be sure, I've.
Is it different, is it different than a special exception?
It, maybe, maybe this one, I'm trying to, is there something that requires the planning board to give an advisory opinion? And, and if, if it's not this, then.
I don't think it is.
Uh, this is a miscellaneous appeal, so no, that wouldn't be a miscellaneous appeal. Mighty paused, mighty paused, right. Mighty paused, right.
Why can't we, why can't we just decline this?
We could.
And then have them work, have them work with the planning department and the coenforcement guys.
The, the problem is, how do you?
Come, come up with a revised one, don't charge them any more money and have them come back.
If you were to table it.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, I think either better, the better bet would be to table it and have them come back with what you're suggesting.
The trouble with that is.
Because then it doesn't have the fees and things to go along with it.
I think that the reality is this going to the planning board is going to have to go through the standard process.
No, I, I'm sorry, so what the planning board looks at, the planning board wouldn't go through the whole site plan process? What they would look at is they would provide comments to this board on these same standards that you're reviewing.
That's like the dog place that they did.
Is that required in this one?
That's required in the conversion or the expansion of the non-conforming use.
It wouldn't be declining, it would be, we'd be tabling it to the next month.
Till when, ever you can put together a non-conformance.
And do you remember the dog place, it's exactly like that.
Exactly like that.
Goes to the planning board first.
As, and they provide advisory opinion on them.
Yeah, they send down the advisory and then we vote it on.
So it comes back to us, within a day.
You're, you're, you're still the, you're the deciders, you're.
All right, so let me throw another curve at you. What about us doing it the way we're thinking about doing it and putting it subject? No, putting it subject to the planning board's advisory opinion.
I would be more comfortable tabling it and coming back. Because that way we're following all the rules and the process seems like it's easier. We've got the advisory board, we've got the advisory opinion for the planning board. We had one that was just like it, it was very easy, it was simple to do.
I, I guess my, my concern is, and maybe I'm over, over concerned, but, uh, the gentleman's been working with the town on a plan that he used advice to come to here and go this process. And in my opinion, the town fumbled. And I don't want to drag it out another mon- I don't, he's probably got a mortgage on it, I don't know if he do or not, but it's expensive, um, one month is an expensive amount of money. And I, I just, we know the planning board is going to come back with an advisory opinion that's acceptable. We know that they're going to come back with that, in my opinion.
But he can't, he can't do anything, even if we did it like that, Mark, he can't do anything about, he can't do anything until he gets an advisory, a positive advisory from the planning board. But he's stuck.
He's still going to have to.
When's the, when's the.
But it still saves time, because.
He would be able to get back to you for your, let's see, what's, today is July, what, thirteen? So he could probably get back to you for August.
But the, but, but the, but if we approved it the way you said, with them giving an advisory approval on it, as soon as they gave that, he wouldn't have to come back here.
And if it's negative, if it's negative, the rule says that we are not supposed to override the planning board's position. And so it would be, say the planning board comes back and says, no, we advised against this. This, we can hold this in place subject to their approval and, and nothing's changed. It stops because the planning board's decision, what's a rule say? It says we can't go against the planning board. We can, but we have to have a rule given a reason.
It says, before making a decision on a miscellaneous appeal from restrictions on non-conforming uses, the zoning board shall refer said appeal to planning board for an advisory opinion. The zoning board shall not act contrary to the planning board recommendations unless it makes specific findings to the fact that justify its decision. So, what, what Ms. Patterson is advising me of is that August, planning board meets on August eighth, this board meets on August tenth.
So there would, so that would be a difference if we postpone.
No, because it's still going to go before then, because it's just going to be two days difference.
It'd be two nights difference.
Did you have a question for us?
Yes, I, I, I just want, I just want to say, this is my first home occupa- allocations for me. I'm, I'm a little confusing because my guy is supposed to be here, but he's not. So that's why I don't have anything in front of me.
You're doing, you're okay.
So.
Let me walk you through what we're doing.
So, my picture is, my picture is to. So, my picture is, my picture is to have the, a, um, a nail shop, but to raise my kid at the same time, because we have three girls, um, two, eight, and thirteen. So, we have, we, we, we try to raise them up here. So, we moved from Waterville down here.
Not from Waterville.
Yes, so I'm moving Waterville down here. So, I'm kinda working this stuff here, so you know, you know, we try to make, try to make it happen to move down so they can end the school, um, gone some two thousand.
If we go the path we're going, which I, I like, actually, it would allow, I think, your issue, both your issues, which would keep it in line and the traffic flow you guys want it to go in. It would, if the planning board, for whatever reason, has a, a problem with the concept, gives them an opportunity to state that. If it doesn't, then we know how we can, we've got a plan to deal with, with the, the, um, ambiguity.
Well, even the last comment that he just read is, we can't go against them unless we have good cause. And I think we've already established that the chairman's put in place his cause for doing something like that, so. I think even if they came back with a negative reaction, it's probably-
I'm go, I'm, I'm go with anything you guys allow me. Cause I really don't, I, 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 this is my first time, so I, you know.
It's looking like August tenth at this point. Would that work for you, for us to be able to make a decision on it?
So, essentially, what we're talking about is, uh, so, what you've submitted as a home occupation, the board, this board's unable to act on because what you've told them is that you're gonna have two employees that are outside the home, which, which is, which can't meet our home occupation standard. So, what you're gonna need to do, and we can talk about this, we should probably get together very soon, as in tomorrow or Friday, is put together an application back to this board, which is actually gonna go to our planning board, again, we'll talk about that, for what's gonna be considered a conversion and expansion of a nonconforming use. And that's how this will move forward. And it's sounding, what I'm hearing from this board is generally in favor of what you're proposing, but we just need to find that right pathway. If you remember when we sat down a month or two ago, when we talked about-
That, that's what I got.
Right, there, there's a number of different ways this could go. This board is, based on the responses we received, we've now found the pathway. But I think this discussion's really sort of shown a light on what is, is now the true pathway forward.
Let me throw another curve at everybody here. I'm, 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 my inner Brian. Does it matter whether or not this fits perfectly into the fact that this is Higas Parkway's home or anything else? Home occupation, if we approve this as a home occupation, we one person. Once that's approved and he's in the Higas Parkway zone, that one person problem goes away because it's irrelevant.
Not entirely. To have more than the one person, then you'd be converting his home occupation into a business, which would then require him to go through the planning board process. However, let me, let me tease this through. What the board has before you tonight is a home occupation application. This board could make action on the home occupation action with the stipulation only one employee. He can get going. He can come back to this board, whether it's August, September, October, whatever fits his schedule, for the conversion of the nonconforming use, so then he becomes more of a business.
I kinda like that.
So, that gets him going to, to your earlier concern about, you know, delays.
I just know how hard it is.
Well, this is, can we do this?
This is good. This is what I love about this board.
Since, since the prior nonconforming-
It isn't usually like this for the first time.
Had two important-
This is my first time here, so, so.
I think the, the question was, that was a hypothetical. I think that was a, that, that took us to a-
I think it did.
So, so if you're, from what I'm hearing you say, we would still review this as a home occupation, vote on it, with the assumption that he, with, with the stipulation, he can only have one employee.
One outside the home employee.
And then he comes back in August or whenever he wants to, and we can do it the way that you found right there.
Yep.
But my question is to you, is he gonna have to pay more fees to come back to us to do that? Or would we essentially waive the fee, do this kind of like a misstep on how we guided him to come?
Well, I, I, I think, calling it a misstep is, there's a lot of pathways, and we talked about all of these. So, there, there's, there's a lot of options that could have been followed.
Granted, we didn't have all the information either, because we had one employee, so.
Right, so, so-
There's a whole lot, less explicit.
So, let's, I would say, yeah, you'd probably have to resubmit an application fee, but that application fee is probably in the order of two hundred and fifty dollars or something to that extent. Yeah, so-
Would it, would it have to go back? It's, nothing's changing.
But he's already told us.
He, he, so what, what he submitted, this application is a home occupation application.
And, and the letter would have to go out?
Right, we would have, cause, because that would be then something different. That'd be a different application.
Even though it's in a, even though it's in the HP zone?
Right, because he's, what he's asking for is really, so, again, we sort of have to tease through.
Spin it through.
Yep.
All right, so, so, let's go through the criteria, based on the assumption that we're leaning in this direction. Does that, do you wanna talk with, with your Cidco advisor?
Well, I've been involved in that, I was just trying to help.
Oh, yeah?
Well, she's, I, I didn't know where I was.
She's the person you wanna talk to.
I know.
So, so, so again, what we're talking about, if, if the board goes through the, the review process tonight, what they would be approving is that you could only have one outside employee.
I understand.
Until you come back and get further approvals. So, the board could either-
Yep.
So, if you could sort of live with that for the next month or two, or whatever it takes to sort of put together the application, again, we can get together right away and start talking about that, um, then I think-
If the board will approve that, I think it's a really good idea.
Yes.
So-
Does he, my only question here is, do you understand that if we approve this, you still, when you come back to do the other approval, you're gonna have to pay another fee?
I understand that.
Okay, so-
But maybe I, maybe I didn't see you guys, because that's just one, one employee.
Okay, but if they come down and there's more than one employee and they visit you, that could be a problem.
I understand that.
That's ridiculous.
The trouble is, it's not, but the problem is, it's gonna be mail. The fee isn't, we don't get one penny on that. It's, it's the advertising.
That's what I was hoping we could do, would be to get around the fee if we were gonna do that. I would feel more comfortable.
If it were an internal fee, I would agree with that, but I don't think we have the, we have to play with taxpayers' money.
No, and it's, and it's nothing compared to going through the whole review process.
Yeah, we, we, it's, it's one, yeah. All right, so, so let's do this. Let's, let's continue the path that everybody's comfortable with where I'm trying to leave. And we're just gonna make some, the assumption. So, what I'm, I'm gonna do here, and if I could get the new chair of the special board to go over, and actually, let me get this to help me through this.
Okay.
I would greatly appreciate it, and thank you for being here. So, what we'll do is, she, just so you can introduce each other, this is sort of like a blind date.
One of my better ones, then.
So, so what, what this lady does is, she works for Scarborough Economic Development Corporation. Her job is to help businesses like you work through this maze. And it is a maze, and she's very good. So, I, having her get up there with you, you're gonna, you're gonna have to buy our meal. So, when you get up-
My services are free.
So, I want her to get up there with you, just so as we ask the questions, is she can kinda walk through with you, what, what, the person that should be here to support you, uh, to do, okay? And, and I, I, I don't, I honestly don't, we'll stop it with that. So, if I can steal somebody else's sheet just cause I gave one away. Okay, so, here, here we go, and the standard is a special exception. The proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhealthful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation. What you can answer for?
It, it's an existing home. I assume you already have the, um, all of your sewer connections and everything is all set, so there's not gonna be a, a change?
No, you're on sewer or septic?
Hmm?
You're on sewer or septic down there?
Thank you.
One step further.
Oh, there you go. Sorry, I didn't even realize the application was there. Excellent. Um, so, yeah, so on the standards for the special exceptions, um, all the chemicals will be disposed of off-site?
What, what chemicals are you talking about?
Um, so, if you're, I'll let you answer that, but it's your, it's a nail salon, and-
So, the nail salon is, um-
Acetones and, and-
Yeah, you know, polish remover.
You have, you have, you have to have a, a specific story. Say, for instance, there was, is, what would, what would, what could happen in that site that would cause an environmental event? Is there enough acetone, whatever, products in it? If, if there was an earthquake and the building fell over, would, would it have any, is there enough to mat, or is it just minimum?
Well, all, all the chemical, it's gonna be sucked out because we are gonna have like, um, exhaust vent that's gonna be sucked or they smell out and stuff.
So, most of it's odor versus?
Where's that going to though? Where's it going to be sucking it to?
Yeah, it's going out to, uh, the back doors and-
It's filtered.
Yeah, the filter.
Neighbors or anything though?
No.
Okay.
Probably, I'm assuming you're using, have a filter, using standard procedures. Uh, the, the next one is, proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
Good answer. He's gonna, um, he's gonna have plenty of parking for the customers and they'll, it'll be arranged so he can, they'll be able to turn around, um, within the parking lot instead of, um, needing to back out onto Payne Road.
Have you seen that design layout? Does it work?
Um, if you, yeah, when you drive by the site, it's a very large driveway, pretty easy to hit.
So, it's easy to negotiate and go turn around in the driveway?
What we don't want anybody doing is backing out onto Payne Road. They'll only do it once.
What's that?
You know how many parking spaces there are?
I'm not certain how many parking, but it's not, um, it's not a strip parking area. It's really just the whole air, front area is pavement, um, so, yeah.
Sufficient.
What's that?
It's sufficient.
It would seem sufficient for a home occupation, one employee.
You've got cars parked there, and someone comes in, someone can still negotiate to turn around if the car's parked there.
Yeah, if I, if I'm remembering right, um, and I can look it up here, but I think it's, it's a wide open curb cut. It's not sort of just your standard one car dri, you know, where it was an auto repair shop. I think it's very wide on one side. There's a small island and you can sort of swoop in.
This is JR's.
What's that?
This is JR's.
You know, I can't remember the name. It's right on the right-hand side. If you go by Cabello's, um-
You know, what we could do is, why don't we put, if you're okay with this, we'll put just, if this is approved, s, uh, subject to the, subject to the, the code enforcement, ensuring that the parking is safe.
Sure, sufficient.
Sure.
Right.
The proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on water supplies.
I'm assuming you're not doing any, there's not construction going on, so there's gonna be no change to the site?
No.
Oh. Okay.
And no dumping in the water or spot or anything?
Are you gonna be doing any yard work at all or vegetation, is there any water nearby that would require filtering? Is there a river that's, is there a brook or something near, relatively near the property that would slow down? Or is, is it fairly flat?
So, everything is going to be, will be match as the water run off?
So, you're not cha, you're not changing the plant, the plant, the plantings or anything like that? So, there's no change?
The proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development.
That's a tough one, since there's not that much development on Higas Parkway and that area. But, um, clearly, it's not gonna be impacting, um, the residences, um, since she, who, who are your neighbors on either side? I'm trying to think of that lot.
Oh, I have only one neighbor's side that's gonna be like, um, far away from me, so.
Right.
Cause the other side's Cabello's.
Yeah.
Cabello's driveway around the back, isn't it?
Yeah.
And the fireworks.
And that's not an ashore.
It's not a shore length, I almost have the area up here for you. Okay, so, I'll show a few folks down at this end.
If he's okay with it, I'm okay with it.
It was, it was a little off on the driveway, but it is a larger opening than the standard opening.
It's this one here, right?
And you've purchased the property already?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And you, you have the deed, and it's your property. Uh, the applicant has, you, you've got enough money to be able to put this job together and complete the work.
And you've run this type of business before? Yes, so, so he's got experience.
I've worked as type business before, but I'm in the, um, commercial, um, renting phase.
In water?
In water.
Uh, proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to generation of noise and hours of operation.
What are your hours planned?
My hour is, I'm planning from ten AM to seven PM.
I, I don't want to put restrictions on hours if we can help it, because it's Higas. But I think the answer you've got here is reasonable, exceeds, yeah, it's gonna be consistent with the other neighborhood businesses.
Yeah, ten to seven, so.
Exactly, can't be, it's less hours than Cabello's is open, so.
Yeah, I guess, the, the, okay, let's see, did I miss one? Yeah, that's all of them. Let's do this. Let me open the public. Is anybody from the public wish to speak on this? I haven't seen anybody from the planning board running down here, which is good news. Probably hear about it tomorrow.
Yeah, drive it in.
So, clo, uh, actually, do we have any letters on this?
No.
Nothing? Phone calls?
Nope.
I'll close the public hearing, we'll come back to the board. Here's what I'd like to do. Uh, I'd like to take each one of these and go, uh, right down through and, we'll do just like on the same and look our way through. Thank you. Any, anything, I'd like to all of it be on the record and all of it be part of our findings and, uh, law. So, finding the facts and interpretation of law, just so that, uh, if anybody needs to go back to refer as to how we ended up here, um, they can see the trail, um, although there might be money.
It was a long trip.
Okay, so, I'm gonna go back to the first one. The proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhealthful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation.
Well, you stated that all the chemicals will be disposed off-site, and you could have some sort of air filtration in that building, so. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, the fact that it's not gonna be disposed of on-site, um, I can't remember if that, on that side, is that? It's not technically on the other side of the turnpike, so that's probably sewer. It's not septic, right?
Yeah, sewer goes in front of that site, correct.
Yeah, I'm fine with it if it's sewer. Septic, I might be a little bit more.
Yeah, and I see no issues with it, especially there's, since there's no construction gonna be, gonna be happening, so no, uh, no impervious soil, we stir up there.
Am I right with it?
Same reasons. Just all right with it.
I agree with the board.
I feel that, uh, that one's fairly straightforward. I have no problem with it. The proposed use will not, uh, actually, why don't we vote on that specific item? On favor of this item A being acceptable. The board says unanimously on A. The proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
Well, based on, uh, looking at the aerial view that, um, we just saw, there's adequate parking for anyone going in and out of the building, being able to turn around without backing out into the road, which he has stated here as well, so I am fine with this.
Yeah, I'm fine now that we've seen the picture and, and the site looks like parking for at least four to six cars there. The only thing I would suggest is make sure when you put up a sign or something, no backing out into Payne Road, but yeah.
And I can't imagine that there'd be a, any significant amount of additional traffic more than what was there with prior visits, so.
Good.
Fine, good.
Add a couple of words. If you say good.
No, after looking at it, I think it looks good.
Okay, um, does it require, uh, the town to inspect it? Or, or feel okay with it?
I think, I, I think he's already inspected it and has told us that it's, it's sufficient for-
You don't see any problems with getting it in, huh?
No.
On favor of B. That's your name in this. C, the proposed use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or require substantially greater degree municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood.
And he stated this will not, um, based on the previous, uh, home business that was there before. Don't see any change from what was existing to what is being proposed, so I am in agreement with this.
I would say with this business is less fire or safety hazards than automobiles being there with cup- gasoline and oils and all kinds of other stuff, so I'm fine with it.
I would have to agree with that and I don't think that mostly is one economy for get their nails done or gonna need the police.
Uh, I'll answer for, uh, Mr. Blaze shortly.
And I agree with the board.
Okay. The proposed use will, uh, make sure.
Did you wanna vote?
Oh.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'll, I'll favor that, thank you. Fair is unanimous. Alright, so I'm on the D, right? Uh, proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on the water supplies. We're gonna start down at this end.
I agree with the board, no. I, I don't see how this would, would be affected at all.
He's the one that's answering the questions, so I, I agree with his answer. I'm not gonna, I have no idea. I'm gonna be perfectly honest, none of this I have no idea because he's answering the question. You're asking me to answer the question. I wanna answer the question.
Well, what we've gotta do though is on record, from a legal point of view, we've gotta be able to defend our position in the event that somebody comes out and, and says, you didn't do your job right. So the reason why we're looking for an answer other than yes or no is what is your logic behind how you got to where you got? And it can be nothing more than, I agree with him. He seems like he can, I agree with that, it makes sense. But that's the reason why.
But really, an upfront statement about this whole thing and how we got to where we are is more important than us.
Right, but we have to go through this before we get the upfront statement, so we'll get the upfront statement.
This is the whole finding effect.
So we're just, we're just getting this out of the way, so then we can combine everything.
Yeah, I can see no additional sedimentation or erosion.
Yeah, if there's no dumping or anything going in to the back of the area or anything. I know that none such runs, I'm not sure if none such runs to that property, but I don't see anything that would be foreseeable.
Based on the applicant's answer, I don't have a concern.
I'm sure I agree with the board. And the proposed use will result.
Vote, vote.
Either proposed use will not be compatible, will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use proximity to other structures and density of development. We're gonna do it again to her down there.
Yes, I'm reading it, I'm sorry.
That's okay, take your time. This is, uh.
Um, I think his answer is sufficient.
Any other comments to it?
Certainly different size than Cabela's, but other than that, yeah, he's a, he's a business.
Thank you.
Hello. Yeah, I don't see any adverse, uh, adversity to the size or the impact that it's got there, so I think we're good.
No, for this business, it's probably got one of the less visual sizes and impact. I mean, you're right next door to Cabela's and the fireworks and the golf place across the street and the doctor's office, so this is definitely less impact than any of those buildings.
Right, Mr. Crockett, um, stated what I was going to say in that, in that, I mean, you're, you're, you're next to the Cabela's Plaza and the nearest residence is far enough away that it went and it's not gonna stand out in a adverse way.
And I would argue that Payne Road is very quickly converting to other than residential, which is happening faster than I thought it would. That doesn't mean that we disrespect the residents there that do do that, but the truth is, we're seeing the transfer, which is consistent with the, um, uh, comprehensive plan too, so. We're not in the shoreline zone. Arms up. All in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, the shoreline zone, we're not in the shoreline zone, so we don't have to vote on that one. The applicant has sufficient right title or interest in the site and, uh, just by statement earlier, he owns properties, so all in favor? Okay, good. And, uh, the applicant's technical financial ability, uh, to meet the standards, he had indicated earlier that he does. Nice shirt on, so it seems like it's okay. So everybody's agreeing with that. And then, uh, proposed use will be compatible with existing use in the neighborhood with respect to generation of noise and hours of operation. It's going to be standard for any business in that area. I think Cabela's is probably the benchmark. So I see, I see no issues there.
Yeah, so definitely within the guidelines.
Yeah. When we get down, again, on that one there, I'd like to have answers through.
Well, I mean, this, um, what Brian is suggesting or stating in his application is that they'll be closed prior to when Cabela's is gonna be closed or won't be lasting.
I'm not, I'm basically trying to eliminate that ten to seven thing. I'm, I'm saying, let it stand as what that zone is allowing, which is there's no time limits. I, I don't wanna be consistent with his own.
Sure, sure. Then I would, um, I would agree with his answer that is the hours of operation will be, exceed the hours of operation that neighboring businesses, that's.
Can you, that's, that's on his previous.
Yeah, I would agree with the hours of operation, but he has told us he has three daughters, so I don't think he's gonna be open more than ten to seven, so.
Man, I agree. Uh, it seems like we've got businesses from fairly early, which would be Cabela's all the way up to today, it's probably open till ten or eleven, so. Pretty, pretty big range there. Good hours.
I think he's gonna have less hours than his, than the neighboring businesses, so I don't see that as a problem.
So I'll just clarify, we're eliminating the, in his write-up, he'd said ten to seven, and so we're saying that that's coming off our.
Oh, he didn't.
No.
The hour of operation will not exceed the hours of operation in neighboring businesses.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was, uh.
But it was stated.
It was stated, it was stated records what technically goes. That's why. Uh, so we're basically.
We won't hold a restriction.
We're not gonna hold into a stated.
Right.
Written statement governs.
There it is. All in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous, okay. So, uh, for the standards and the special exception, based on the assumption that this is in fact a, use, what do we, this, this is, um, home occupation and we're transferring the use. Uh, all in favor of, oh, any discussion actually first on.
Just, just one thing, I, you do understand that you can have a sign. You're, you're, you're able to have a sign.
Um, the street sign?
The small street sign, yes.
That's another conversation we need to have a little bit, because it's in Higas Zone.
Oh, right, it is in Higas Zone.
So let's go back to that. Good question.
Okay, alright.
So.
Other than that, no.
Any other comment, any other questions? This is my, here's my synopsis of this. This is a very, very unique circumstance where in normal circumstances, this would be fairly straightforward in a regular zone. Higas Parkway is one of the, is a zone that's very unique and eliminated, uh, residential in its process, even though residential had been there for years. So consequently, it's taken away a right that somebody previously would have had. And so based on that logic, I think we are restoring that right because it's grandfathered to be able to have a, uh, conversion of an existing use to a different use, thus allowing us to be able to justify this process in this manner to allow him to be able to run his business based on the criteria that were brought before us. And that's the logic I'm using. Does anybody challenge that or question that or wanna add to that?
No, the only thing I have is where, where in the questions was it for the one employee?
Um, the, uh, it's actually stated in the, the next section that we'll go to.
Okay.
Any question, any comments on that? So all in favor of the motion is presented? That's unanimous, so that's on, it's just not the final piece. So the next piece is the home occupation. And so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read through these and, uh, we don't have to vote on these individually, but what I would like the board to do is comment on each one of these, uh, as to their logic, as to why we're using it. And I, I do believe that, uh, a very viable argument is the grandfather and, uh, and the right, this would be equivalent to the nineteen ninety-two changes and anything before that, so anything that's beach could do what it wanted to do, even if it wasn't allowed anymore, and that's kind of the logic I'm using. But if you challenge my logic, if you disagree with it. The occupation of profession, probably especially you, you need to comment if it. Uh, the occupation of profession shall be carried on wholly within the principal building or within the building accessory there too. So you would be answering that question, so I'll reread it for you, okay? The occupation or profession shall be carried on wholly within the principal building or within the building accessory here too.
Alright, okay. Are his application back?
Uh, I don't know if there's response to each one of these.
I don't think.
These are pretty easy, so.
We'll do that. Just didn't wanna violate whatever he may have said.
Here's the good news about this, the good news about this is yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, just answer yes.
Because these are the rules that you're gonna be required to meet until you go to the next step.
Yes.
Uh, the home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling unit for the residential purposes.
Yes.
And that would be I, very easily argued, given the fact that you're gonna have five people in the home and so the business is going to be secondary to the fact that that's the primary residence. No more than one person who is not a resident of the dwelling shall be employed in the home occupation. So at this point in time, the rule requires that no more than one person, uh, who is not a resident of the dwelling. And that doesn't mean that you can't have multiple people, but they can come at different times.
Yes.
It just means that any given, there would be one person. The exterior signage shall be permitted in accordance with the home occupation sign provisions under section, um, oh, twelve, sign regulation subsection E, and I'll challenge this section here saying that this is not relevant based on the fact that it's in Higas. So I'd like to have this in our discussion removed from the requirement because that does not apply to this zone. It would be, so, and this would be replaced by whatever the requirements are for the Higas Zone.
The signage requirements.
So this would be replaced by the Hi- the Higas requirements, so whatever that is, I don't, we can still look it up at this point. But that would, that would be handled by the, um, the CEO at their discretion. Do you feel comfortable with that? Do you feel comfortable with that?
Honest answer? No, I do not.
What kind of space is probably?
That's okay.
He, he's operating, this board's approving it as a home occupation, so he's, he's operating as a home occupation, which is different. The, the sign standards really are standards for businesses that are sort of standalone businesses. Of course, the nail salon is a business, but it is being, it is a home occupation, so it needs to follow the home occupation's.
Fair enough.
I don't, I don't think, to be honest with you, I don't think they're gonna really probably put up a sign bigger than what a home occupation would be anyways.
That's how the sign is made.
Mr. Chair, what's the sign, what's the sign?
It's a six inch, it's six feet, six square feet.
So you, do you perceive putting up a sign bigger than six square feet?
No.
Okay, so I don't think it's enough, I don't think it's a point where we'd have to go down the Higas Parkway thing.
I'm fine with it. So, um, if that's the case, we'll, we'll take staff's advice for now on this specific case.
Is there, is there a distance? Is there, is there a distance? Is there a distance from the property, if I recall, that it has to be, or am I incorrect on that?
I know you're right, it is. It can be up to.
Section E, I'll dig it up here, so within five feet of the right away.
So it's gotta, gotta be within five feet of your right away and it can be six square feet. Are you good with that?
Yes, it's about two by three. To put in perspective, it's about the size of that picture.
There's actually existing, uh, you, since you're, you own the property, there's an existing sign, posts and background. The sign is gone for the garage, but that was presumably what you could reuse for now until.
Yes. You're probably just gonna reuse the existing sign plate?
Yes, we had you redo some.
Yeah, if you're using that sign plate, it's already out.
Perfect.
And that would have been grandfathered, so I would use that.
Yes.
Well, just mentioned, as was just brought to my attention by Karen, that just so you know, before you put anything up, you will need to get a sign permit through the code enforcement office, but that's, uh, easy.
Understand that.
That's just through the code officer, not these guys, not me, don't worry.
Many, many easy ones.
Yeah, not me.
Let's see, there shall be no exterior display, no exterior storage of materials, no other exterior indication of home occupation or vari- variation from the residential character of the Higas Parkway. Um, this.
Now, now what I would probably, Mr. Chair, not to get off base on this, but I just wanna make sure that you understand, I think where that's kind of leaning to go is the, I can't remember what you call them, the signs that say nails and stuff that have the big waves on them that people put out at the end of the street, you wouldn't be able to put one of those out.
You mean like the blowing fan things?
No, the, the one.
The feathers?
The one like they have at Chicago Dogs.
Feathers, yeah.
You wouldn't be able to do that big sign that says nails with the, it's ten feet tall and has.
There was one of them?
No, I'm just saying you wouldn't be able to do that.
Well, I mean, I never seen that before.
Cause some salons, some salons have those up in front.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's unique for its own, so I just wanted to make sure you knew that you could do one of those.
And, um, no nuisance shall be generated, including but not necessarily limited to offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, heat or glare, which I think is, the business is, is what it is. The traffic generated by such home occupation shall not include the volume of traffic so as to create a traffic hazard or disturb the residential character of the immediate neighborhood. So you're, you're understanding all this as we're going through this?
Yes.
And, and afterwards, my advice would be to sit down with Karen.
Yes.
Afterwards, sit down with her and she'll kinda, she'll help you through the remainder of where you're going from here.
Yes.
And, uh, the addition of the off-street parking provided to meet the normal requirements of the dwelling, adequate off-street parking shall be provided for the vehicles of each employee and the vehicles of the maximum number of users or customers the home occupation may attract during peak hours. So in other words, you have, you have to make sure you have enough lot that you can support the cars that.
Yes.
Home occupation may utilize not more than twenty percent of the dwelling unit floor area, provided that the purpose of this calculation, unfinished basement and attic spaces are not included. And given the fact that we're doing a replacement of an existing, I believe that does not follow in because we're just, we're just exchanging one for another.
I believe that to be true as well, and I also see here that Brian Longstaff had some math that he did and at the end of it, he wrote okay. So I, I think not only is the conversion from one to the other, I agree with that line, but I think also the numbers work, so we're two, two for two on that one.
Make sure that Brian and you had similar. The unfinished, uh, that's all I just, the, uh, occupations may include retail sales, subject to the following limitation. So you, you have retail sales, I'm assuming you sell.
Nail polish.
Polish or whatever in your site.
Yes.
Just can't have too much of it.
Yes.
The, the area that you can have is limited to four hundred square feet, which is.
You should be good.
Yeah, that's pretty big.
Yes.
Um, and the sale of the products is limited to products and articles produced, assembled or processed on the premises. And seafood caught, uh, harvested off the premises by persons who reside in the dwelling. Now, that's an interesting one, products or articles produced, assembled or processed on the premises. I don't know how to answer that one. It doesn't fit and it, it wouldn't have fit the automobile either. Because if they bought windshield wiper fluid, that wouldn't fit, so I think that's under the grandfather. So I would, I would, I would argue under that position, that's followed under the grandfathering of the previous position, which would allow you to do what you wanna do.
Okay, so three for three now.
Is it, do you agree with that?
I'm shaking my head, I know, I roll.
It's in eleven, it's not relevant and, uh, twelve is being removed to be, uh, actually falls in line, motor vehicle repairs and motor vehicle towing business is not allowed, it's home occupation. So we've eliminated that and put this, again, the logic of this is. So we've eliminated that and put this, again, the logic of this is that it puts it more in conformance with the zone that is in this home. So based on that, I want a motion for the board filling these with those findings of fact, meet the requirement just on this section.
Before we do that?
Yes.
I just wanted to, we're voting for, you've told us that you were going to have two employees. So we're voting that there will only be one employee. So you need to really adhere to that because the town could come in and inspect anytime they want. If they find more than one employee, then you're found in violation.
Yes.
That's on, on, on-site at the time.
Right.
Yes.
And that's, that's one that doesn't live there. So you can have you and your wife and somebody else as well.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to be very clear. And you know that you can come back before us under a different...
We're expecting a second step here.
Fully understand.
Okay.
So do you have a motion?
Move to approve as negotiated throughout. And I think as, for my part of the justification, I, I think that number twelve really is probably one of the biggest parts of that. And that is that the vehicle repair is specifically excluded from this area. And so this is eliminating that, that, that one item that is excluded from the, from the Higgin's Parkway area and replacing it with something that is included.
But there's still one right across the street.
But that's okay, because the goal is to, as we go through...
There's one less.
We'll see one less. And the, the job of this board is to try and make things more inconformance, and that would accomplish that. So as I was saying, I'll second that. Discussion on the motion, all in favor? That's unanimous. Okay. So we are done with the certain part of this. But now I want to do a final piece for the benefit of the planning board and for legal documentation. So I'd like each board member to do is to explain their rationale behind, and then we're going to vote on. Let me put the motion table first. I'd like to move that we recognize the ambiguities of the regulations and the circumstances. And the board has decided, based on the help from the CEO's assistant here, what's your official title?
Senior Planner.
Just a noun.
She's a janitor.
Based on the advice of the senior, advice of the senior planner.
We do have the concerts tomorrow, so...
And on the, and on the wisdom of the board, that it is reasonable to allow, based on the variables that we have, being, that's, we're, we're applying already existing items that were grandfathered. We're applying the rules consistent with the zone if it were in the zone. We're allowing it to then go back for an advisory opinion to the planning board, for them to come back, to let them come back to us, to open it up for larger, I suppose, more people if we need. And that would be the goal of the board in this process is to bring that back in that model as opposed to putting the burden of a full site plan And so those are the, that's what the, what I believe is the, the logic behind where we're going. And in that form, although messy, our motion would be that that would be on record to document the logic, or lack thereof, of, don't put that in there, the logic of this board's decision to move forward as we have.
Do you, do we have to put to whatever motion you just did there? Do we have the type of appeal that that would come back before us?
Yeah, Ms. Laney's appeal.
If Mr. Wayne puts together an application for the non, that expansion of the non-conforming use, if he sort of chooses to go down that path and he feels he needs more employees, then yes, that would come back to you. And I think basically what Mr. Maroon's motion would be is a sort of an advisory opinion to the planning board as they're making an advisory opinion.
Right, we're advising the planning board.
You're saying that this is the pathway forward.
We are looking for.
We're looking for, yep.
That's exactly...
But should we have the type of appeal when we're sending our advisory to them? Should we tell them what specific appeal we're leaning towards, or do we need to do that?
I, I guess I'm not entirely certain what the question is.
For coming back, like when we're sending it to, to the planning board for an advisory?
Well, it, it, it would be sent to the board only if we get an application that requires going to them.
Right. Yep.
So I could add in there that if, in the fact he does go for Ms. Laney's appeal, that the board read our, our findings of fact and conclusions of law, so that they understand that our goal here is to not put him into a situation where he has to go for a full form process. Because of the uniqueness of the circumstances, the, the disadvantages of, he did not have anything to do with the zone change, neither did the prior applicant. So the, the burden was put on him by the town, by the change of the zone, because it was...
Careful about that, because he just bought the property.
But it's still, you know, that's been tested. And that's okay. You can actually use that argument. That's, yeah, that's been tested. The, the burden goes with the property, not with the person that bought it. So we're saying that, that being said, we're aligning everything with the fact, we're, we're giving the, we're giving deference to the, the reality of the circumstances and trying to make it as easy as reasonable based on its reality. Now, at some point, he may decide to tear down the house and build in a building. That's a different conversation. That goes, that goes to full site plan review. And so if, if he's doing it, if, if he goes to the whole unit, that changes the model. So we're just talking about as it sits. That's how it would be. But if it, if it goes beyond that, and hopefully it will, then that goes to the regular process where you'll, you'll be coached to that and go to her immediately.
Yes.
Okay. So that's in a form of a motion for the board, for the, for the planning board, if it gets, to second on it?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion of the motion?
Good motion.
I, I'd just like to add one comment. Certainly not, not changing any of that. I, I would like to say for the record that it's not our intent to, to try to skirt the way anything is written. And the reason that we came to our decision the way that we did was the fact that it's very ambiguous in here and it, and it really doesn't spell out what you do in that residential situation in that Higgin's Parkway. So it seemed like, seemed like that we got there in a kind of a roundabout way, but we did that because we were trying to, trying to kind of weed everything out and make sure that we were making the right decision and, and went back to the right source.
And so we're not trying to circumvent the planning board's authority.
Correct.
That's the last thing we want to, to imply, is that we're trying to circumvent the authority, but rather apply the, apply the rules provided by the town council over the years to the best of their ability that both the planning board and the zoning board have to use. And that's, that's kind of how I see it, is not, there's no usurpation, usurpation. We're not trying to, we're not trying to manipulate anything.
No, I think, I think we're just going by the guidelines we're given in the book. We're adhering to what's before us. And even the town struggled with different ways to do this for staff. So I feel that this has been the best conclusion that we can come up with. We're approving it the way it is now. If it goes to more than one employee, then we come back and get the advisory from the planning board and go with it from there.
Perfect. How could you state your position in record too? This is one of those ones, it's really important that each board member is on record as to how they feel. For, as, for anybody that doesn't understand the process, and this isn't going to happen, but this is just for reference. The board takes a position, is it fourteen days or thirty days?
I'm not sure what this board's, I think it's thirty.
A person that's come before the board or somebody that wants to challenge the board that's affected by it has thirty days to bring this to superior courts.
Superior court?
Yes. Where a superior court will read our findings. They'll determine whether or not our findings were complete, thorough, and did our job right. And we'll do one of two things. Uphold our position, or in essence, come back and say, "Get your acts together. You need to do a better job explaining what you're doing." Or overturn it. So that's very expensive. It costs a lot of money. It takes a lot of time. And my goal has always been not to go to court. Because if we do our jobs right, if somebody chooses to take this to court, that they will read it and say, "What do you want from them?" They've covered, they've done their job explaining what they're doing and what their motives are. They can't challenge our motives or our logic or our process. They can challenge us not being complete in the process, not answering the questions that need to be answered. So those are the things that have to be done. And why it's so important that we state our positions on record, because the, the record is, is the written document that ends up going to court.
So my position on the matter, in, in regards to this, as it was stated, due to the fact of the uniqueness of the grandfathered property or the grandfathered home business beforehand, the fact that it's in the Higgin's Parkway zone, I, I feel that we're in the best, we're working in the best interest of the applicant in this case. Because Scarborough wants to welcome businesses to thrive and to come here, try not to put any hindrances or any additional barriers or challenges in their way. I believe this is our best option.
Would you, just to kind of clarify that, you're not trying to circumvent our standard rules though?
Correct.
To make it easy for the applicant?
Yes.
You're just trying to apply the applicant reasonable rules. The rules as you see reasonable, not for the benefit of the applicant necessarily, but it happens to benefit the applicant.
Yes, exactly. That's, yes. Thank you.
All right.
I think there's so many different ways that, that we can take a look at this. Another one just came across my mind. I didn't even bring it up.
Please stop.
If we take it, if we take it strictly from a home occupation point of view and a guy has a residence, regardless of what the district is, I think this is cut and dry that we would convert it.
I, if this was in the right zone, I wouldn't think that's...
Yeah, yeah. That being said, we know that the residence is not in the residential zone. So now, is it really, is it really a home occupation? It doesn't really make any difference because the occupation is not allowable occupation or business in the zone that the home is in.
And that's grandfathered.
So, well, I'm concerned we're doing the right thing.
It's hard not to factor in the zone that you're in now. You're saying the Higgin's Parkway zone ordinance doesn't address the fact of home occupation or, excuse me, grandfathered in residences. So there's nothing addressing what he wants to do today, is my...
It does, it does allow for grandfathering of existing uses.
Right.
Its goal is to eliminate them. But it does allow it. They can't make them tear down the house. So in that sense...
Okay.
The house has a right to be there.
Right.
The long-term goal comes back to all businesses of that nature.
Because I'm, you know, I'm not a seasoned member, I don't know the ordinances as, as well. I think it's unfortunate that...
You're doing great.
I think it's unfortunate that we can't factor in the fact of where the zone he's in and let him have two employees. You know, I think, so I strongly want to be able to let this man open his business and get started and fully function in the way he, business plan is laid out.
It would have to be a variance request, and then you'd have to go through the variance. It would have to be another application, I think, again.
I'd love to be able to do that. I, that's the frustrating part. And this is where the emotional side comes in and, and the black and white comes in. We just, I agree with you. I think we all do. Anything else you want to add? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of approval? That's unanimous. Congratulations. You can have one employee.
Thank you. I, I would, I would just reiterate.
They make it so tricky.
We've, we've reiterated it many times, but businesses that are coming to Scarborough as a new business, it really behooves you to seek out the council of SEDCO and work with them because they can make the process a lot easier on you and give you a lot more guidance.
But I can't change any rules.
No, but you can at least guide people down some paths that they need to go.
This is my first one, seeing as we're in a serious... No problem.
Thank you.
You went down a lot.
Karen, have a good night. Good luck. Congratulations on your, on your business. Karen, could you do me a favor and connect up with, am I?
If this was a business.
I really need you to...
Very, very important.
On the second date.
Maybe, maybe you could do a nail, maybe you could do a nails for him.
Who in the world's going to sew it? Who in the world's going to ever listen to this?
That's kind of how I feel. Like, who's going to sew it?
Rich, rich people.
His pen's not in that.
And yet here we sit.
We do have to start doing your appeals before 1:30 this year.
11:30.
No, I didn't know where you were going with that last one, so...
I didn't either.
We did.
That's why I came in a little startled. I was thinking, "Oh, no, I do." Okay. So a final appeal, right? It's appeal number 10579, 146 Gorm Road, tax map, lot R254-016, zone VR4, Dan DeCosta. And it's a special exception appeal requested for... So Mr. DeCosta, if you can state, Mr. DeCosta?
Yes.
If you can state your name and your address and your goal.
Dan DeCosta, 146 Gorm Road in Scarborough, looking to build, is that where you...
If the, if the chair will allow me, I could maybe summarize the project for you.
Is this what you were here for tonight?
That's what I was here for tonight.
Okay.
This one I know.
Working all with that.
And to give you an idea of, just, just kind of, again, some, some background info. Karen's in my building. We see each other regularly. She did not come to talk about this at all because of her ethics and her standards of saying, "I don't want to influence the board in any way." And she had plenty of opportunity to do that. And I actually told her to do it. And she still would. So I mean, I, I think that speaks volumes of how kind of a business and how SEDCO does business, is their goal is to do it right by the book. And I commend you for that.
Right. If you would allow me, I, I can walk you through some of the information and tell you a little bit more about this project, that, some of which information may not be in your packet. But if I could clarify a couple of things. This is a request for a home occupation, proof for a home occupation. Mr. DeCosta here owns Lily's Limousine, which has been a family-owned and operated business that provides car services for people, really often for special occasions and weddings, proms, corporate events, but also airport transportation. This company has been a longtime Scarborough company. They've been here doing business. I believe they've been in business since about 1988. So Dan recently purchased a home located at map R54, lot 16, 146 Gorm Road. And just to orient you, this lot is located, it's in the R4 Village Residential, and it's surrounded by lot 18, which is Casa, the Casa facility. And so wrapped around on either side, one, to one side is the entrance to Casa, and to the other is just another strip of the Casa property. So he is surrounded by that facility.
Is where the gentleman that does a lot of coyote hunting at that, at that road?
He's right on... He's right on, he's right on 146. He, the.
Isn't Gorham Road?
Things I know.
Yeah, I know. His property is surrounded by Casa, so to the back and to both sides.
The one little building out in the front?
Yeah, so it's a home that's right out front.
Yeah.
It's a home and a garage, a double car garage, I believe it is. It's right front.
Sort of a white garage.
Yeah. So if you're facing the Casa property,
Yeah.
it's just to the left.
And that's the left. That's not the one with the, with the.
Roofing. Roofing, superior roofing.
Okay, so that was superior roofing. And they had equipment out there, right? I'm trying to remember what they had there.
Can't speak to that. I don't know what's there. But anyway, so just, so that orients you in terms of where he is. He does have neighbors on the other side of the entrance to Casa, but in, surrounding the property is the Casa facility. So the residential living area of this home that he's in is about fifteen, just under 1,500 square feet, and the lot's just over half an acre. So Dan would like to run his business out of this residence. And that's why he's here before you this evening. The business activity that will take place in the home is basically an office, and that's where Dan works. And he's really the traffic cop, so to speak, in terms of taking the orders, working through the business, the actual business of the limousine service. So again, and that activity would take place in about 200 square feet within the home itself. Dan will be keeping vehicles on the property, though. And he does plan to build a garage, and I think there was some information in your packet about the garage. The reason he's building the garage is so that there won't be outdoor storage.
Protect cars too, is that right?
Right, sure, sure. Protects the garage. So, and, you know, as staff noted in the comments, the planned garage needs to meet the standard of no more than 40% coverage. And by my calculations, including the existing house, the existing garage, you know, right now is about 9 to 12% existing. So, you know, you certainly have some room to meet those standards. So Dan will be the sole employee that will be in the office during the operation hours of the business. He will, though, have drivers who would come in, pick up a limousine and leave. So it's a gray, I hate to bring up a gray area for you, but. So he doesn't have employees that will be working on site. He does have employees who will come, pick up the car and leave to go deliver, obviously, the service, you know, to individuals. So again, they will come in, leave their car. Plenty of room on the site for an employee to park their car. And they'll pick up the vehicle. There won't be any customers coming to the site. So he doesn't have a need for signage and no need for parking for any type of customers. So other than the office, the, like I said, the only activity is the moving of the vehicle in and out of the garage. So we don't anticipate any real nuisances with respect to noise, vibration, dust, any of that, we don't anticipate it. And he does have some buffering, obviously, between him and the other neighbors simply because of the way this property sits. So the home occupation, clearly, it's going to generate some trips in the vehicles that are taken in and out of the residential lot. Many of the trips, though, would be generated off-peak. So you wouldn't be necessarily having limousines coming in and out during the peak hours. Let's see. And all the parking by the homeowners are going to be in front. So the homeowners, meaning Dan and his wife, will park in the garage that's attached to the house. So no on-street parking would be required. Again, we, I think we mentioned this, home occupation. The office part will be about 200 square feet. If you count the living area of the house itself, which is about 1,500 square feet, that represents about 13.5% of the living area that would be devoted to the office. So clearly, he's meeting the 20% standard for using of the dwelling unit floor area. He doesn't have any retail sales. There's, again, no customers are coming to the site. All customer contact is through the web or through phones. He doesn't plan on doing, there's no repairs that are done there. They're done off-site at.
Mechanics or dealers.
Right, right. And it's, obviously, it's not a towing business.
But what about cleaning?
Cleaning is done on-site. They're luxury vehicles, so we detail them every day. So constant detailing means the next time you do it is a very quick 10-minute thing by the driver who's already bringing it back.
What about washing?
Oh, depends on, it depends on how busy it is. A lot of times we'll use the car wash. In Maine, we have to use the car wash about six months out of the year because of the, because the water freezes. Otherwise, I do it myself. Right now, I have to bring it to the car wash.
Let's come back to that, that's something that I think we're going to need to deal with because the river's right there too, in the marsh. But I don't think it's insurmountable, but just during nine people on that. Anything else, Dave?
Right, so I think the, you know, the additional question is, again, he does plan to build a garage that will be in the back of the property so it won't be seen from the street and it won't be seen really from the front of the house. That is, those plans are not, I don't think.
Not at all, no.
Draw those up, but again.
Are we, are we talking about with these, these designs, no lesser standard than these?
Those, those I put in there to give you an idea of what I envision a residential-looking garage to be, even though the garage will be bigger than those.
The reason I ask the question is because, number one, four doors is hard to make it look residential. But these designs imply a certain level of architectural design as opposed to, you know, when you buy in a.
It'll be very much not an industrial-looking or a steel-fabricated building. It will be.
To these standards?
Yes. Yep.
I think we can, we're happy to.
Why don't we just try to answer questions now? Why don't we jump into, we'll jump right into the question. I think you answered most of them anyway. Why don't we go right to the.
Can we, I'd like to ask some questions.
Sure, feel free.
Where is the business located now?
Right now, that's where I do, my, my office is in there now. And all I do is my computer work and phones. And I answer the phones on my cellphone, which I have for 13 years that I've owned it. No matter where I am, that's where I answer it, just at a computer and do everything through email and that type of stuff, answer the phone. The cars are scattered right now, which is a first for me. Usually, they're wherever my business has been. And they're at drivers' houses. I've got three cars in Buxton. So when I have to go wash a car, I have to go to Buxton to do them or I have drivers do them for me. And, you know, a little bit, often I'm trying to fit, trying to think about where my cars are right now and who's got what and make sure that logistically it'll work for business. And it's, it's interesting. But that's where I've, that's where I've decided to keep it until I know what my next step is going to be.
How many vehicles do you have?
Right now, I have seven. Our average in the last 13 years has been seven or eight.
And when you say seven, how many are, like, sedans versus?
Three, two of them are stretch limousines. The largest stretch limousine is 38 feet long, which is why my garage plan is about 40 to 50 feet deep. Because when I, when I get something that deep, I can also double-park sedans in other bays. In fact, I can save money on the size of the garage by buying lifts, which I've researched quite a bit of. I've seen other companies in other states that have these lifts. And so in a, say, 45-foot-deep bay, I can actually put four sedans in there. Two and then two stacked.
So are you planning on having a garage large enough to store all your vehicles?
Yes, yes. My, my, my hope is a four-bay garage, 45 to 50 feet deep.
And how many drivers do you employ?
I, my average in the last 14 years has been about 10 drivers.
10 drivers?
Yeah.
And yet, in your application, you basically said there's never any more than two drivers a day.
We also have an average of two jobs a day over the course of a year. And they're rarely there at the same time. Some exceptions on a Saturday here and there. We're a seasonal business also. I don't do anything else in the off-season. We are busy enough for that. But our average is still about two to three jobs a day. And, and in the course of 24 hours, rarely are they there at the same time. And if they are, they're only there for five minutes.
How high is this planned garage? Because obviously, you're talking about stacking, so you're talking about going much higher than a normal garage.
My current garage that is attached, I could put one of those in there if I wanted to. It's a little bit higher than normal, the garage. I don't know the height of it, but the garage doors, when the previous owners put them, had to put another panel on them to cover the, cover the opening to close the door. And that, I think, looks fairly residential, even though it's, you know, it's only a two-car garage. It just happens to be a little bit higher. My vehicles themselves don't have above-average height.
But how high are you thinking?
I'm honestly horrible at that estimating. But, you know, if you put a standard, I, I would say, you know, something a little bit less than this. It's, I'm just picturing the garage that's attached now, and it's, it's a little bit higher than normal. I couldn't tell you what the, you, you wouldn't know it from the outside because of the peak.
I believe the max building height in the VR4 is 35 feet. I'll confirm that here.
That's why I was asking, because I knew there was a height.
Just a moment.
Yeah. I wouldn't make it any higher than the one I have.
Yep, maximum building height, 35 feet.
So you would be fine with that requirement?
Yeah, that is an outside height?
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is the garage area part of the business? It's part of the business, right?
The garage would be.
No, it's separate.
Right, that's the, that's the question, because the, the business is not necessarily taking place in the garage. It's a storage. I know.
No, 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 no.
I'm just, that's the question.
It's part of the business.
What is?
The garage.
Right now, right now it's not.
Right now, it's not.
Your office is in your home right now.
Yeah, it's just a desk.
What you're saying basically is that's, the accessory space is business.
Sure.
Fair statement.
Only building it for the business, correct? I mean, to store the business.
I'm not sure what that means. I think it's just a fair statement. I can't, it's a warehouse. Is what it is, just happens to be a car as opposed to cans of soup.
Number one, two employees, huh? Yes.
So that is sort of the critical question, because then what a statement is space within, since you're building a total more than 1,000 square feet of. So I think that's sort of how that becomes a critical question. I'm just pointing out that, that the question that Mr. Blaze just brought up is sort of a threshold question because the garage that's being described as 2,000 square feet, one of the standards in the home occupation says that, what does it say, "Space within an accessory building totaling not more than 1,000 square feet of floor area." So I think that's where Mr. Longstaff's memo was, one of the comments was sort of directing the board to vet this question out, and it sounds like Mr. Blaze has his thoughts on it. And that's where we're in the right direction.
Is that a, is that a home occupancy point or is that a building? Okay, so if I, if I didn't have a business and wanted to build a barn, it wouldn't matter? If I, if, just, just because of the home occupancy part?
As bizarre as that sounds, yeah. We're getting them tonight. Again, I'm going to ask the board to give you a little bit of time to kind of digest some things. The Village Development Center.
Right, that, it does get back. I mean, Brian, I, Brian and I have talked about this at some length, and it, it really is a board question. You know, do you treat this, I'm not sure how you've treated caterers before because the caterer has the truck. And if the, where the truck is parked, if that's considered part of the business, then yes, indeed, you would apply that same standard. If you haven't traditionally included the garage or wherever you parked the catering trucks, for instance, you know, that's the gray area of what's considered outdoor storage versus the actual activity of the business.
But this really is the activity of the business.
Limousines are.
The limousine service.
The limousines is, that's a source of income.
Right.
A delivery truck is not the source of income. The product that's in the delivery truck is the source of income.
Although, there is service, so it's the service that they deliver outside, you know, picking up people, that the, the trip around, taking people around is the, is the actual business and product. I know, it's, it's fuzzy.
My question is. I want to read in the home occupation requirements, but I also, I'm looking at a different, a different issue here.
Yep.
So.
Sure. Karen.
So the home occupation standards, the home standards. One, the occupation or profession shall be carried on wholly or within, wholly within the principal building or with any building accessory thereto. Two, the home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling unit as for residential purposes. And I don't know if it meets that standard alone right there because it's, it seems to me that while you'll be living in the residence, it seems that this is a pretty big expansion of a business. You know, it may, so, but we need to talk through that. Three, no more than one person who is not a resident of the dwelling unit shall be employed in the home occupation. And it sounds like, it sounds like there's a possibility there would be more than one on the property at the same time, but maybe not. So again, there are things that we need to talk through.
They would have to be in that same five to 10 minutes that the switch-over takes place.
Okay. The signage part doesn't apply. So five, there should be no exterior display, no exterior storage of materials and no other exterior indication of the home occupation or variation from the residential character of the principal building except as expressly permitted by the district regulations of this ordinance. This prohibition shall not apply to the storage blocks of trust. I guess if it's well-hidden back there, maybe you wouldn't see that. Where do you plan, are you planning to go through the, from that, that concrete foundation, between the concrete foundations in the, in the main building? Is that your plan of entry?
Where do you mean? To the right of the building?
How are you going to access to the garage, like, from the garage out onto Gorham Road? What driveway for that going to go?
Well, I have room to the right.
Of the home?
Of the home. I also have an option, and there's a house across the street that does this. And I know, I know they're not a business, but I would love to access it through front and back doors of the existing garage. Because I can, I can vacuum the cars right there and send them out and get to the back, right through the, right through the garage.
Okay, well, that might be a good option because it seems to me that otherwise you may need another curb cut to get over, around to that right side of the home.
Yeah.
I don't see a curb cut as happening.
You can only have one curb cut.
Yeah. No nuisance shall be generated, including but not necessarily limited to the offensive noises. Uh, no nuisance shall be generated, including but not necessarily limited to the offensive noises, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, heat. But I don't see that as being an issue. The traffic generated by such home occupation shall not increase the volume of traffic, so as to create a traffic hazard or disturb the residential character of the immediate neighborhood. And again, a, a vehicle coming and going occasionally, I don't think that that's a real issue. In addition to the off-street parking provided to meet the normal requirements, the dwelling adequate off-street parking should be, you say you've got plenty of parking in the back for employees. So again, that's probably not one that's an issue either, it's just more of those earlier ones. The home occupation may utilize, A, not more than twenty percent of the dwelling unit or area, provided that, uh, provided that for the purposes of this calculation, unfinished basement attic spaces are not included. That's gonna be a tough one, because twenty percent of the, of the space, and now you, now you're adding all this additional space. I, I think you're gonna be well over twenty percent. Unfinished attic space, okay. Space within an accessory building totaling not more than one thousand square feet of floor space. This is clearly an accessory building. Ten, the home occupation may include retail sales subject, uh, you won't have retail sales there. And the other two, the other, the others don't apply either, so. Boy, there's, there's a few of them here that are gonna be tough hurdles for us to get over.
I would like to hear some comments.
The one I would grapple with the hardest is the nine C, the space within an accessory building totaling not more than one thousand square feet. That's the hard one, because the one you proposed in fifty by forty is two thousand. It's a tough, that's a tough one.
The previous one was our four. And so I'm, I'm looking at that to see if there's any room there. But it's actually more restrictive. I, I, here's my struggle, and this is not my call, so a little bit different than the other one. We've got a zone that, the VR zone, but it's on a major road. It doesn't describe, do you read the VR description? It doesn't even come close to describing what that road is.
Yeah.
And, and let me just sort of put it on the record, I'll read it. This is what the VR four zone purpose is. This is why, when people ask us how we get to where we add or whatever we do, or, this is our, this is kind of the challenges. To provide residential neighborhoods of a higher density, a, to a manner which will promote a wholesome living environment, and accept a significant share of the town's residential growth. To this end, residential development shall not exceed four dwelling units per net residential acre plus additional density through development, transfer, or affordable housing. The village residential development standards are extent, intended to promote the establishment of neighborhoods with a mix of dwelling types, accommodating a mix of house, households, age groups, and income levels, incorporate, uh, communal recreation areas, greens, commons, and open spaces, and create a village-style development pattern with an interconnected network of landscaped streets, blocks, and pedestrian ways, in a manner that complements adjacent residential neighborhoods and commercial districts to instill a mix of housing types and land uses in and around our town and village centers. All developments in the VR four's district shall be serviced by public service. That is the last thing two oh two is, or one fourteen. And what is confusing to me about this is, this was written after, this was put in place in oh nine. When did Casa go in?
Uh, they get their approval within the last, within the last three or four years. Oh, oh, originally? I'm sorry, I, boy, I don't know originally.
It's, it was before oh nine, I would think.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, originally it was.
Yeah, it was like nineteen ninety-something, I think.
I believe when they did their...
So Casa doesn't even fit in the zone, yet they just approved an expansion.
I think they came through as a, uh, expansion of a non-formal use, if I remember right. I know they came to the planning board, I think they came to this board first, and I can't remember what year that was when they did their expansion. I'm trying to see if I can get a history here, when it was originally built or... Blurred that one.
But, but I'm, what I'm struggling with is, what, this is another one, what do you got? And I'm not sure we get the same room to move as the last one, but I'm trying to figure out what... What is, the house was currently what? What, what was the house prior to you taking?
Prior to, we moved in as, into an abandoned home. And it was flooded, it was destroyed, seven feet of water in the basement. We rebuilt it entirely, and I don't know who it was that abandoned it before, but it was abandoned for six months.
And do we know what was there before? Is there, wait to check records on that? What was it, what that was approved for?
It was a roofing company, and I only know that because there's, there are signs in the attic of the garage.
I can look in the code.
Probably why they had to have the lodge doors.
What's that?
Probably why they had to have lodge doors.
This is what I'd like to do, if I...
Yeah, I think so.
I'd like to take a ten-minute recess, if the board's okay with that, so that we can get some information of what was previously there. I think that's relevant. Uh, what was previously there, and maybe even some old Google app pictures of the last one. Because I don't know if it was there. The other question is, was it vacant for more than a year? Because then that wouldn't matter, if it override, you couldn't use that.
You said, you said it wasn't a year, right?
CMP shut the power off in May of fifteen. Scarborough, Scarborough said that it was considered abandoned in May of fifteen.
They power neged the decision. When did you buy it?
We bought it in February of sixteen.
Okay, so it's within the year. But it doesn't lose its grandfathering, if there's any grandfathering.
Well, it was a single-family home.
Right.
So, single-family homes are allowed in the VR four.
I guess my question is, though, it sounds like it was a business out of a single-family home.
There was a roofing company that was working it, yeah.
There's, there's another company just like it that's next door to us, too, but I don't know if, they've got two or three trucks.
What, you should know all...
Yeah.
Sort of...
Yeah, I wasn't aware that there was a business in there, I thought it was just a...
Yeah, it, it, it's a...
Is this a record?
So, well, that's the question. Is it a vic- is it a business record? I don't know. Did they get a permit? Was it? You know, tacitly approved? What, what was there? Can, can you do the map?
I'm trying to do, yeah, the, the...
Going back like the...
Yep.
And I'm gonna use the restroom, and I'll be right back. So we've got a, we're like a... Coming back at, uh, say, uh, twelve of, uh, ten, ten of, ten of ten. Is that okay?
I wonder if I can get his...
There is a history, actually, could you explain what you found?
Okay, we're re-in session?
Yes.
We never had a session, so if you said anything rude, you're on tape for history.
There's only one you left. Um, signature roofing, when I looked it up on Manta, it comes up as one forty-six Gorm Road, Scarborough Main. And it says roof and chimney repair, quality roofing repair, thirty years of experience. Uh, more details about the business categorized under roofing siding and sheet metal work. Our records show it was established in two thousand and seven. And incorporated in main, current estimates show the company has an annual revenue of seventy thousand and employs a staff of approximately ten. Owner Jerry Reynolds is what it says, partner. But it was established in two thousand and seven.
Uh, in the Google pictures, did you see any vehicle storage there?
You can have a picture here from twenty thirteen, oh, no, I'm sorry, twenty ten, I'm sorry. And there's, uh, one vehicle in the driveway and one next to the driveway. Does it, does it really, there's no materials stored outside the house, or...
Can't provide any concrete off...
Um, in the, in the file...
We went through the file, and there's nothing there. Right, so, so let me throw a thought out at people.
They do, Mr. Sherr, they do also have an NAICS code and a SIC code, so they were definitely recognized.
Just not by the town.
Right, just not by the town. Recognized by all the other entities.
So, here's my thought. These are really two separate issues. One is can he run in in-home occupation? That seems pretty straightforward. Beats the requirements of in-home occupation. Nobody but him in there, four hundred square feet, blah, 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 blah.
Whoa, whoa, I don't agree with that.
I'm not talking about the business, I'm talking about just him working out of his house.
You're, you're talking just the office, not the new garage?
I'm talking about just the true definition. There are two different iss- we get two different, I see this as two different issues. We've got in-home occupation, and then we got whatever this is over here.
Meaning the vehicles, correct?
What's that?
Meaning the vehicles.
Yeah, say for instance he was parking the vehicles down the street. Does he have the right to have that in-home occupation as it fits the requirement? I would say yes, it does, if those busi- if those vehicles weren't there.
I don't know if it's on topic, but I'm having a hard time believing you have ten employees and seven cars, and there's, at one time, there's no, I mean, you don't have staff meetings?
But I wanna keep it separate. And I'll walk you through why, because I don't, I think we're gonna have to, my opinion is we're gonna have to table part of this, but approve part of this. And the logic is this. The, the request is for an in-home business. Whether or not that allows for the storage, I think probably is my overriding view, probably not. It requires a different appeal, either a variance appeal or something other than a special exception. A special exception applies to whether or not you can have an in-home business. And the in-home business says you can have it if you don't use so many square feet. What's frustrating is because that last business wasn't documented by going through the right process, and nobody ever stopped it, there's no history. So what I wanna do is I wanna, number one, set the stage for what we have, which he's working out of his home. He technically, by town standards, illegally, right now, because you have to be approved to do it. He can't get it down like he should've, and like the previous tenant should've, but they didn't. So he's following the rules as far as an in-home occupation. And that, to me, is the first piece. That doesn't talk about the vehicles at all. The vehicles could be in Vietnam. But the bottom line is, he can run, I wanna be able to establish that he's doing it in an own business. And I honestly think we need to break this in two. There's a term for it in, uh, Ruppets Rules of Order, I'm forgetting.
Bifurcate.
What is it?
Bifurcate?
I can't pronounce it.
You wanna bifurcate it?
I wanna bifurcate it. I'd like to bifurcate this. Uh, so, in my opinion, we're bifurcating. Bifurcating this. Somebody had to re-rock this off. So if the, if the applicant is comfortable, my advice would be that we break this into two pieces, and that the applicant requests this to be broken into two pieces, and go back to SEDCO, and sit down and deal with town and SEDCO regarding what we've got, whatever that is, with the vehicles. But get you legal and recognized in the town as an in-home occupation. So that's what I'm suggesting to the board.
I don't, I don't know if it matters, but I don't have any, any intent, any, uh, interest in doing business there without the cars. I wanna, I wanna be where the cars are.
Okay. So then, then it doesn't really matter whether you get that...
Right.
But you aren't doing business out of there now? You're, you're not using that as your office to schedule appointments?
The only thing I'm doing is, is my phone calls and stuff there. No drivers are ever coming in. I mean, there's nothing going on, there's like staff meetings or none of that. I mean, it, it is my home. It's not a large home. You know, I've, I've got four kids, or two of them are leaving, so we're right there. No drivers are gonna come in there.
You're essentially running the business out of there, though.
I'm ju- yeah, I'm basi- yeah, I'm just answering the phones and stuff like that. But that's not my, right now, everything is, every, everything is pending. You know what I mean? So wherever I end up is where my office will also end up.
How do the drivers get their trip sheets?
Everything is electronic. Everything is done by app. Some drivers I don't even see two or three months, especially if they have my cars. I, I...
So they show up at your garage, and they already have their sheet?
No, they, 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 everything's on their phones, it's all, it's all digital. And they, if, if the car's at their house, I never even see them. I just trust that they're in their uniform, they get in their car, go do their job, and if, if they've agreed to keep the car for me while I try to figure this out, then they're also cleaning it, the car, they're doing everything. Too, it's a benefit to them, too, because they don't have to travel to wherever the office is.
I highly recommend you get GPS on those, then.
Yes, yeah, they are. Yeah.
Yeah, anyways, back to the point at hand. I don't wanna belabor this. If there's no benefit to you to have the in-home occupation dealt with, then we're really looking at the whole thing. And we can go through the criteria if you'd like, it's up to you. If we go through the criteria and we deny it, you can't come back with anything similar for one year. Uh, you can withdraw, and then regroup, or ask for a table, that's your call. We can't make that call. We could ask for more information, but I'm not sure what we'd ask for.
So you're saying the garage plan as it is is not possible?
I, I'm not saying that, I'm, I'm saying that based on what I am reading, and I'm speaking for the board, the board needs to speak for themselves. I'm just, the, I'm just, from doing this long enough, I believe that the board, based on the reality, has no choice but to say no. And based on that, I would not advise you to have a vote, because it locks you down for one year. You can't come back with a similar appeal, one year. And there may be a way around it that I don't know. That's not my, that's not what we do. But that's what the town does, and that's what SEDCO does. So by not locking, if you, if you carry this to the next step, which is going through the process and voting, the door's locked.
Right.
Why lock the door?
And the problem is with us, going through the questions, we can get, I don't know how many of the questions we had out of the two, sixteen out of seventeen, but if we can't agree on that one, that denies the whole thing. And there's probably about three or four that are really tight to try to get around right now. So I think it requires more information, and...
I mean, I'm not telling you it wouldn't be approved tonight, and it could be. And that's, that's a gamble you can take. I, I, I have my concerns, and you can see what, I ask for a reason, for a reason.
I- i- if, if the garage is considered, you know, if the storage of the vehicles is considered part of the business, then I don't see a path to approval on that.
We haven't worked through that?
Right. But I think that's the real, that's the real crux of the issue.
I, I don't think we've worked through it, but I'm not sure that there's enough information that's been provided to give us guidance with it. And so I can't tell you what to do. But we can either go forward or not, and what would you like to do?
I think as a home occupation, I see four issues here. And like the chairman says, that there may be another avenue to get this done. But as home occupation, I, I don't see that we can do it, just...
It's, it's, and again, we haven't voted, and we haven't gone through the criteria, and we haven't done any of that. But if we vote on it, once we start the process, we start the process, and we really do need to make a decision on that. If you'd like to table it for the next meeting, you can always cancel, if you decide you wanna cancel, you can do that. If you'd like to bifurcate it, we could separate it into two pieces, vote on one piece, leave the other aside. If you want us to vote, we can go through the entire process and vote. It's, it's your call.
Now, what he's planning, and this probably doesn't make any difference because of the size of the garage, his plan was to go inside the garage and use one of the bases of the garage to get to and from, get his vehicles into the next garage. Even if he had like a, I don't know, like a attachment or something like that between the two, that's still not gonna work, because it's still gonna be more square footage than, so it's...
Again, at this point, I really don't wanna get down to...
Whether it's attached, if attached doesn't matter.
I, I don't wanna get down any further here, what would you like to do?
Is, does any of this have to do with how late it is? I mean, I don't want to either.
No, no.
The last thing I ask is, I bet you don't wanna fuck with them. The last thing I ask, we've been here to one and the other. I, I can't tell you what to do, but you...
We never decide it based upon time.
Right.
We give you the option of...
What was your thinking when you started talking about the fact that it's on a main road?
Well, it, it doesn't matter what I think. It's what the rules are. The dilemma we've got is, we try to be fair to people. We cannot tell you whether we're gonna vote no or yes, because we haven't gone through the process. And that wouldn't be a fair thing to do. Well, stay till midnight, doesn't bother me. But I've got my concerns and I'm probably the most willing to bend of anybody here, and I'm worried. So, you can, you've got control for a very short period of time here, because we've gotta make a decision. If, the reality is this, we can table it to, for another date, you'd be the first on the agenda, so that wouldn't be the time issue. And it would be the next month. You could table it to two months away, whatever you wanted. You can table it because you want to put together your argument in a different manner. Or you can have us continue with the process and we'll vote and it'll either be approved or declined.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but Brian's comments or notes was, he had kinda made a comment or circled on the square footage, right? Because he was concerned about that as well?
Um, Brian, let's see, what did Brian do? He, um, in terms of, what Brian was looking at was the square footage in terms of overall lot coverage, which is a building requirement. Which you're allowed up to forty percent building coverage and they're only at about fourteen or fifteen percent with the garage. The, the square footage issue has to do with the home occupation and that's where Brian's comments sort of suggested, is the garage part and parcel of the home occupation? Or is the garage considered a, an accessory use to the residence? And that was sort of the, the question and direction, that was the question that Brad Longstaff's memo, I think, the direction that Ms. Martin has put forth for consideration. And, but, so if the board feels that the garage is part and parcel of the home occupation, it's too big. They just can't meet that standard. It's a, you know, thousand square feet in an accessory unit, that's sort of the end of that. If the board sort of follows the pathway of it's an accessory unit or an accessory structure to the dwelling, then you can sort of deal with it in the, in the framework that has been put forth by the advocate, the representative.
It may be legal precedent too. I, I'll be candid with you. I don't think, I think this is one of those ones you need to turn. I, I don't think you've got, and again, I'm, I'm, this is where I, we've got, we've got, our job is to make a decision. So I guess I'll ask you right now, do you want us to continue or not?
What were you gonna say?
I would go with tabling for now. But...
I, I sense urgency, so...
On your, on your behalf?
No.
Okay.
No. So I, I, I feel rushed, so we'll table it.
So you're, you're requesting a table at this point?
Yeah.
All right, so, all favorable, I'll table till the next meeting first.
That I would think they were.
Do you want two months or you want one month? You could tape, actually, you could ta-
I don't think, do we need to decide?
You know what we could do is you could table till next month and if you want to table it out again, you can.
Can I say something?
Sure.
The deadline for next month's agenda is the twentieth of this month, which is a week from today. I just...
It doesn't cost you any more money. You're gonna be first on the agenda.
That, this, the paperwork would need to be in then. I don't know if that's possible.
So the question then is, can you get your ducks in a row in that short timeframe? Would it be better off? I'd give it two if I were you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to get this out there and maybe I'm out of place in saying it. I just, the applicant said that he felt rushed. I just wanted to have him give us his perspective on that. I'm hoping that he doesn't perceive that we're trying to...
Thank you.
Force him into this decision by making him feel rushed.
If you feel rushed...
I, I don't have anything necessarily to add to change that, but I definitely feel rushed. And I totally agree. I don't want to be here any longer either.
Oh, it's, the last thing...
I understand, I understand. That's how it feels. I'm not sure that anything would change how that feels.
I think you're sensing is people who would really like to help you but are worried about being able to.
Yeah.
I think we don't, yeah, if I may comment, I think what we're trying to do is stop ourselves before we start the process and give you an unfavorable possibly decision.
It's not, it's not so much rushed, I think, as much as it is us trying to vet this a little bit. And see if we can really honestly feel, and sometimes what the chair will do is go around and just get a general opinion, do you think we're gonna be able to get by all these? And I'm probably the toughest one on that.
And we could do that now.
And I, I don't think that we could get by on all of them. It's not, I, I don't want you to feel rushed. It's more that we're trying to help you and not crimp you. Because once we go down that road and we deny it, you've got that lock for a year and we're just trying to help you. I understand you'd like to get this going sooner and get everything done.
I'm, I'm not as worried as much about that as, I mean, I felt like, I felt like you were in the middle of sentences and then stopped yourself to say, make a decision. That's why I felt...
Well, the problem is, we, we can't tell you what to do. And, and it's a fine line and I'm walking, I've probably stepped over it a long way. But there's a fine line as to what we, we can't tell you to table it. If you want to go forward, you have every right to do that.
Right.
And, and, you know, it's fine, go forward, falls. And if it takes four hours, it takes four hours. That's okay. I, I think the latest is one.
I think the park was like two. The park was two or two thirty.
So, time isn't the issue. The issue is, and, and if you're sensing stress with me, I can tell you right now that I would be voting no based on the facts I have.
So I think that's the criti- the critical issue, I think, in terms of guidance for, for the applicant, is getting that sense of... People really do believe that the garage is an integral part of the business and it's not considered separate as outdoor storage. And if that is, if that's, if that's the pleasure of the board, then that guides him in terms of whether he comes back with more information on that issue or a different approach to doing the business there.
We haven't worked through that, so we can't say that's what the issue is, because none of us have talked about it. But I think, granularly, it doesn't fit very nice. So just, just a touch, as you see it right now, how do you feel?
For me?
Yeah.
Looking at it on here, it's a thousand square foot limit. The dimensions I'm drawing, it's two thousand square foot. It's very black and white, what it states here. And as far as, we don't mean to give any appearance of being rushed at all. There just may be other avenues.
I think he was looking for a yes or no from you as to whether you...
Oh, so I would vote, at this, at the way it currently stands now, I would vote no. Thanks.
I would be very brief of mine. I would, for the same reasons and maybe a couple others, I would be a no.
And I'd be the same.
And that's, one more and that would pretty much do it.
I worked for a limousine company for probably twelve or fifteen years.
How you do this part?
Hmm? Yeah, I used to give you rides all the time.
He doesn't remember.
It's, it's a little bit bigger than this one. This one is seven cars. That's the one that I worked for, started out at maybe twelve and grew. But there was always people around. Always. Drivers were, maybe things changed with telephones and everything like that, but drivers were always hanging around.
This was before telephones? So you were doing this before telephones? I just want to make sure that's established.
Just, it's just not before telephone.
You come back, and you come back, it's one o'clock in the morning, and you go to packing the cars. You know, I don't know whether you're doing this all inside or not, but we never did it inside. There wasn't ever room to park it if everything inside. This limousine business is not a home occupation. Every driver is an employee of the company. No more than one person who is not a resident of the dwelling unit shall be employed for the home occupation. I'll never approve this.
Yeah, I, I just want to set the record straight on that. You haven't heard all the, the arguments and the positions on it, so I would prefer that you'll keep an open mind, and I'm sure you will. But I think you're getting my sense of concern. General plan?
I mean, I think everyone is really kind of our concerns here and I think it bottoms down to this doesn't really, the home occupation. And I think what Chairman Maroon here is trying to do is say maybe there's a different avenue to do this. Because I mean, you are right next to a very large business, and other businesses, so who says you can't do it, just maybe not this way?
There may be another way.
Okay.
Maybe you can investigate what Casa has done.
And, and, I'd table it for two months.
I don't want to speak for the applicant, but I think tabling is the right avenue for right now, although I, I think tabling is the right answer for right now.
But I want to make sure, I need you on record with this. I don't, I need to know that you are wanting to table this because you're going to get, or you're going to attempt to get better information to sway us as opposed to feeling like you're being pushed to get that.
I mean, that, that was a completely unfair vision of mine company, you know, and I guess that would have been better said if we had gone forward and done the arguments. Uh, but that's, that's why I'm going to table it.
I think you got a very fair, th- th- this board tries to make it work.
I'm just talking about his, his version of a limousine company.
But my, my question for you though is, I don't want you to table it for any other reason than because you feel that you need to get better information to us to, to benefit you. Not because you feel rushed. He's only one vote. So he's only one person, one vote. He may not even be here next, next time. Maybe I'll fish in or what. So the point being, the, the reason you're doing this needs to be for a specific reason tied to information. That's the only way you can table something in this process.
Yeah.
So as long as you're comfortable, can you, and I need that to come out on.
Yes, I need you to get more information.
And I think you've got a very good person working for you that knows a lot of the ways to...
I'm gonna suggest that we move to allow this to be tabled till two, two months, first on the agenda. The second, that's not a discussable issue, all favorable. Be tabled for two months, first on the agenda.
Who was second in that, Mr.?
I did.
Thank you.
Again, I'm sorry we didn't get, I'm just...
Thank you.
We'd like to urge us to review. But we're basically a quasi-dishonest, we have to follow the rules that are given to us by the council.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Do you want to do zoning board comments?
I had an additional comment. Um, I'm look, I'm curious, this is, you guys, I'm sorry, it hasn't, it doesn't regard you guys. I drive by Bailey's every day and they still have lights on.
Yeah, I, I can concur too. I go by it every day and it was all lit up.
I think the question I have is, Mark, you always talk about the integrity of the zoning board. I'm kind of, I mean, I'm new, so to me, it's surprising to see that...
This is a month after.
This is two months now, since our decision.
We made a decision that didn't allow Bailey's...
To use the electrical out at the outside path.
Oh, this is a, a...
The restaurant.
The restaurant, right near Old Blue Point Road.
Yes, I live down the street from it.
Okay.
Well, that's a point.
Well, no, but we spoke to Brian last month about it and it was part of the decision.
I've heard discussion about that name in the office.
Because I drove by Mr. Chair and it was fully electrical out there. All the electrical units were on the ground and everything was plugged in and it was completely lit up.
Okay, so I'd like to, we haven't adjourned yet, I'd like to put something here, put real quick here. I believe that the board should come out stating that if this is dealt with right now, the fines will begin in town condition. The fines are gonna be, but that's enough. Okay, if you want to make a motion on that, feel free. You can be anywhere from a hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars a day.
I also lived down the street.
I would let the town make, make a call. I don't have a problem with saying it.
And so do the owners live down the street from me.
I mean, I'll make the motion. I, I believe that we need to give one week's notice, because we don't know if they talked to him or not. I don't know if the town's going in, I have no idea.
Yeah.
It may be a town's error. But one week from now, if those lights are on, they need to commence with a daily fine, it should be determined by the town manager.
No, I mean, I guess, I'm trying to get a sense of us as a board. I mean, we make a decision two months ago and we discussed it at the meeting a month ago.
They're doing this, they're gonna try and weigh us out in the season.
And...
Well, there was also, there was also...
Well, who's weighing us out though, the town or Bailey's?
There was also a opinion sent down by the zoning board with strong comments about this.
That's...
So they could get their...
Disregard for doing what they were not supposed to be doing.
Because their liquor license was being held.
Yes, because the zoning board sent it down.
And they still got it. And the zoning board sent down their opinions.
They had strong remarks.
Yes, they did. And Tody got a copy of that and was provided to the council and they still got their liquor license, I believe, or food handler's license. Maybe that's the one that was being held.
So was it possible for that?
There, one of those was being held.
Both of us sent down strong comments about what was being done and the disregard for what had been...
Did you write letters?
I didn't, I didn't.
Okay.
No, but I mean, no, I mean both boards.
Right.
Sent down strong remarks about our disappointment with them.
Who went to the town council with those remarks?
I don't know the planning boards made of.
The town house gets a cop, Tody gets a copy of whatever advisory opinions on.
They sent comments down to us when we were reviewing it. And I believe it was also part of their liquor license that they're...
It was liquor license or food handler's being held, or what?
Because of them starting things that they were...
Because one year ago, Jay, they were taught to do this.
Right, oh yeah, no, I'm well aware of this.
Okay.
So if there's a violation, does that mean that license gets retracted?
No, but they start accumulating a fine per day as, as approved by the, I'll leave it to the town manager to make that call.
Yeah.
But it's no less than a hundred dollars, no more than twenty-five hundred dollars a day. I know what I'd use. But I, I think at this point, we need to, we need to, either this board has authority or doesn't.
That's kind of what I'm wondering.
And so, I, I think it's reasonable, what's today, today, Thursday?
July thirteenth.
Wednesday. How long, how quick can you get somebody in on that film?
I will have a conversation with their co-guys tomorrow.
How about Monday?
To be in writing?
Well, there's their, I, I think, to try to set a date, I, I think there's some legal procedures. I'm not sure what letters have been sent yet. I, I just don't, I, I haven't been close, so I, I think...
They broke our requirement. Their approval was not...
Right.
It was specifically spelled out, they could not do that.
No electrical, no...
No electrical.
Before they left here.
I think, you know, I, I guess what I would suggest, that if you want to get fines going as quickly as possible, to sort of make your recommendation that fines begin as quickly as legally possible.
Okay, that's great.
And I would sort of leave it and then we can...
Perfect. So I'll move that fines begin as soon as, hopefully there won't be...
Legally possible.
As soon as legally possible, if there isn't immediate resolution. And any answer other than yes, sir, is unacceptable.
And the fine amount to be determined by the town manager.
Town, anywhere between a hundred dollars and twenty-five hundred dollars is the rule.
I'll start with that.
Per day. Good second? Any thoughts on the motion? Say no.
Well, I mean, there seems to be a pattern. I mean, what happens if they unplug for a week and then they plug back in?
That fine would start again.
Yeah, it's, it's tough for the town to try to, it's tough for the town to try to manage some of the things that we approve. Because there's just not enough manpower.
This is, this is just one of those ones. This is where we get into trouble with these guys being in business since two thousand seven. It creates all these issues. It's, it's the signs that down on one fourteen, well, it's a sign, it's supposed to be two by three, right? But it's got the Christmas tree on it, lights and...
Well, we look at the lobster traps that we specifically said we don't want, more than five lobster traps, and all of a sudden there's fifty lobster traps.
But, but the problem is the town only has so many people to manage these things and they, and like Brian did last month, Brian brought up an issue and... You know, look at the working life theory to deal with that. But Brian's right. They didn't have the authority to do that. And, and we worked hard to help them. But honestly, that was a relatively, if they had a history, it would have been a relatively easy issue for me. I knew they... I knew they had stuff there before, so it was easier for me. This has been an ongoing problem. It's in our face. I'm to the point where I've, I feel it's, it's unacceptable. So the motion is, as soon as reasonably possible, they're notified, and the day after they're notified, if it's whatever, whatever the town can do, fines commence no less than a hundred dollars, no more than twenty-five hundred dollars.
Per day.
Per day. And if it starts up again, from now until they come back to this board, the fines will commence again without any warning. That's my motion.
We'll second that.
My point, like I did, I, every day, do I take a picture every day?
All in favor? Unanimous?
Or if you, if you have a documented phone call every day, someone...
And it seems we're still being recorded, just so board members know and anyone else who might be watching this. We are in the process of establishing, or maybe it's already been posted on the website, a complaint form on the code webpage.
It is on there.
Is on there now, because what's happened in the past is we'd get calls, and we'd sort of try to deal with things, but they would get, they would get lost in someone's log. So these complaint forms will go in a property file, so we'll now have a record to say, hey, you know, these lights have been issued for years, or this is the first time we've gotten this complaint. Let's go have a, we can have a pleasant conversation, or boy, we gotta...
So now Karen just said to me, sorry, Karen just said to me, you need to call. So I mean, do I call every day and say Bailey's lights are on, or fill out a complaint?
I think that complaint form, that, that's the intent of this complaint form, is to codify these things. And so when our code officers show up as well, they can hold the stack of papers and say, look, this isn't... So anyway, we will certainly, I'm sure you heard it before, but we'll do, I can't...
It's on the website, and we have hard copies in the office, and it has to be filled out by the, the...
Because technically, aren't those like waiver sign, banner signs like I was talking about earlier? Those are supposed to be taken down every night and put back out.
Uh, yes.
And there's many of them that stay up, that are in...
And you're, you're allowed to have one that says open, and another one that, like, says what you're at, whatever you do, but you can only have like twenty-one months. It's so called with...
Can we send out something by email? What do we have for ability to get to each, each business? Maybe we can ask...
Are you talking about the feather signs?
And that says, look, pay to our website to see what you can do, because we're coming knocking on your door.
I think that would be a good conversation to have with SECO.
Is the complaint form also for the signs that get put up along with one of your businesses that don't really have a home?
Uh, you mean like people who just sort of stick them in like a little...
Yeah, seal coating or painting.
As they go around. But yeah, that complaint forms for...
They can do those for so many days, they're like thirty days.
No, I'm not, I'm sorry. I meant like, I mean the painting guys and the, and, you know, who, you know, so I...
You see them pop up on Level One. Yeah, the political signs are different.
Right, political signs are different, different beasts.
Is the board comfortable with me working with SECO to come up with a plan to get communicated out to the town? I think that will give the zoning administration, I think the, the, the code enforcement will have a lot better, easier argument if we've got a database. I know they've got a full database.
I have a brochure for signs, impermitting and stuff that I may have, that's down in the office.
So by that way, we all know who got the messages, and then they've gotten there one morning. And then, then if it's not dealt with, a code enforcement officer driving down the road can saw it and say, you got your warning already. It doesn't need to require any, jot it down.
The SECO chair just came back in, just so she knows what we're referring to. We're basically talking about businesses that we approve things or don't approve things, and we tell them that certain things are not approved, and then these things appear and are done after we have specifically said not to do them, or some feather signs or whatever you call them, that are supposed to come in and out.
We also, we also just authorized that Bailey's has been violating for now two months a requirement that we put in.
The lights that have been put up.
And we have given notice that we expect a hundred dollar fine, up to twenty-five hundred dollars fine per day.
Okay. My, my only concern is, is, you know, I, I don't want to put SECO in an enforcement role, but in, in an information or communication role, absolutely one hundred percent.
That's exactly...
We're looking more for information.
I want you to protect the people from me.
Now he's running for chair.
That was my bad. Well, I don't, I, I guess, but it, it's not fair for any, anybody can, I, I don't mind taking the hit, so.
SECO is a tool for people to utilize, and the information, if you can get it out there, would be great, because it's seeing a lot of things.
Communication information, all over that.
Any, any, any comments from SECO, Ryan? Any comment from, from, from the city?
No, it's been a pleasure.
This'll be his first and last city.
I'll see you at the parking booth tomorrow.
I bet Brian sees this.
I think it's more likely that you'll be seeing me not here.
He'll be, he'll be directing people on where to go for the Motor Booty concert. Just so folks do know, seems we are still recording, the Chamber of Commerce. Big show tomorrow night in the park, Motor Booty.
Supposed to be beautiful weather.
Yep, so...
Motor Booty Fest, awesome, if you haven't heard them.
That's put on by the Chamber, and we'll have a parking attendant there, so...
And just for, thank you so much for helping. That is awesome. And Brian, we do love you.
Motion to adjourn. Before it goes too much.
No second at all. In favor? We are adjourned.